Right, but. Okay, we have to press continue to allow that. Okay, there you go. Rick, are we, we've got one more minute and we'll start. Councilmember Widmer may be a little late logging in, but we can start with the three of us.
Okay.
And then we have another Menlo Park Fire District member, Dan. Hi, Dan. Okay, got our building inspector, Mike Greenlee. Our building official, I should say, he's not just inspector. Okay, guys, it's 3 o'clock, so let's start the meeting. Because there's a lot to unpack here in the, in the agenda and we have a hard stop for Councilmember Degoya to go to the Park and Rec walk around at 5 o'clock and we want to get through it. So we're going to call the November 3rd study session to order at 3 o'clock. May we have the roll call, please? Anthony?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Degoya?
Yes.
We'll note for the record that Councilmember Widmer is not here at this time and Mayor Lewis?
I'm here, thank you. And item number two is the public comments. Would you briefly brief everyone, Anthony, about public comments?
Certainly. So for anyone joining by Zoom link, you're able to use buttons at the bottom of your screen, participants or reactions now as well. I think to raise your hand if you'd like to make a public comment, we have that limited to three minutes. It's at the discretion of the mayor. If you're joining us by phone, you can dial star nine on your receiver and that will raise your hand for a public comment. Now would be the time to make a public comment for an item not listed on the agenda.
Any members of the public want to make a public comment for anything not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will go on to our regular agenda. We're going to reorder the agenda topics and bring item number six to be heard and discussed right now. And that is, the item is to provide feedback on wildfire home hardening for the town. And I'd like to turn it over to Mike Greenlee, our Atherton Building Official and Inner West Consulting Group, and John Johnston, our Fire Marshal from the Menlo Park Fire Prevention Protection District. So you guys get to toss a coin to see who's going to present first.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. Like was just said, this agenda item is to receive some feedback and direction from City Council on wildfire fire home hardening. John Johnson with Menlo Park Fire is the Fire Marshal and is here to go over some wildfire home hardening requirements and to answer any questions or concerns that you may have. So John, I'll go ahead and give it to you.
All right, Mayor and council members, thank you for letting me be able to present to you this afternoon. And I do have our current operations chief, Dan Coyle, here in case there are any operational questions. And also he has quite the extensive wildfire background also, which is going to be helpful. But in regards to a little bit of history, just so you know, the town of Atherton and Menlo Park is in a non very high fire hazard severity zone, which is nice because we do not have any fire history here or conditions that would relate to any concerns that we have, that we have experienced within the state. Now, obviously due to climate changes and environmental concerns, that is always an item that we need to take into an effect as we look at the changing environments around us. And as we build more into these areas, it is more of a concern. And so I'm glad to see that this item is on the town's agenda. So with that, there are a number of items that we'd like to address and the Menlo Park Fire Protection District actually addressed it and put it into our standards and guidelines in the last code adoption process, but only as a guideline for guidance for homeowners to use as a recommendation. That was included in, in your packet. But there are a few things that I would like to recommend and look into studying and maybe have as an incentive to homeowners. And I'll go over those now. The first is, we'd like to recommend with the next code adoption that we have a Class A roof as a minimum for all new structures that are built in the town of Atherton. That has actually been something that we've been trying to pursue with everybody in our jurisdiction as a good minimum. Because it helps with most fire spread, even just amongst homes. We actually had that experience here in the town of Atherton. A number of years ago, we had a fire at one structure and just from the wind blowing, it actually caught the roof on the next house adjacent over on fire. And so that is a common method of spread. And so by doing a Class A roof, it allows a good protection from allowing adjacent structures from catching fire just from that wind effort. So we would like to see that in studies actually from Southern California from 30 and 40 years ago have actually shown how that reduced the number of fires and the damage and destruction. The next is looking into recommending that no combustible material be within five feet of structures. So when you have any places that embers could get trapped due to wind blown, there's always chance for those embers to then ignite whatever combustible materials may be in there. So what we're recommending is that from the structures and five feet out, that it would be a hardscape or you would utilize a rock or something like that so that if those embers were to blow there, they wouldn't have anything to catch on to and again, reduce the chance of a structure catching on fire. What we have found through all of the studies is that when structures catch on fire, they end up being the greatest contributor to fire spread. So what we are trying to do is actually eliminate the structures here within the town if there are a wind event or something from being contributing to that. The next item is to allow free permits for hazardous tree removal. Samhitael County actually just this past year through recommendations from Cal Fire actually gave a list, and again, this is in your packets, of what they consider to be hazardous trees. Again, through all the studies from the fires that we've had here in California, they found that due to certain trees, the greatest amount of destruction came around these non-native trees. So what I would like to encourage is that we follow Samhitael County's lead and allow those trees that are identified as being hazardous for fire conditions to be removed and allow a free permit for those. Obviously, if you decide other conditions, then that would be great. But we would definitely like to follow what we are seeing as anything that contributes. Let's go ahead and make our community safer by removing them. Next is to encourage voluntary compliance with the district standards, which our district standards with that guideline actually looks into Samhitael County's fire safe guidelines. And here is where obviously when you look into voluntary compliance, what all does that mean and where's the incentive? So this is something that I think between the building official, Mike Greenlee, and maybe others is how would we incentivize anybody following any measures that would aid into that? Next would be to look into common causes. What are common causes? And of course, we're all seeing the effects of trees and power lines and weather. And so what I'd like to encourage is obviously predictable is preventable. And so if we know that trees are falling into power lines, which just from our recent storm, we had plenty of that, let's go ahead and try to mitigate that measure and whether that's through special districting or other measures. Let's look into being proactive in either undergrounding those power lines over a certain amount of time or allowing aggressive tree trimming following PG&E's guidelines through the homeowners, et cetera, so that we do not have that interaction and therefore reducing that risk and liability. When it comes to being adjacent to a wildland urban interface area, which Woodside, Potola Valley does have some of those areas, we are adjacent or an area of influence. And so with that, what I'd like to propose is that areas west of Alameda de Las Polgas, we do have different landscaping and we have different terrain there. And so what I'd like to do is pursue looking into how we can provide what would be like a shaded fuel break, maintaining an egress corridor, because we all know that Walsh Road is a very long road where it has only the primary ingress, egress. We do have some emergency routes for the horses for on foot and some additional for vehicle if needed through Bear Gulch. But finding ways to improve that would be great and looking for efforts, especially with the amount of dry grass and stuff that we have out there next to the freeway. It'd be nice to be able to have more of a year-round vegetation management so that we can again, reduce the chances of anything occurring out there and we'd be able to mitigate it quickly. Those are my main items. And so I'm now actually looking. The only other item I wanted to look into was a question in regards to requirement versus voluntary. And so one of the things I want to be sure of mainly due to insurance reasons, et cetera, is that we do not designate, you know, any part of the community as a high fire hazard severity or a wildland interface area. Because when that happens, Chapter 7A of the building code actually would then apply where we would actually be required to apply the wildland urban interface building standards. So I want to make sure that really what we do is just recognize efforts that we can do to improve these efforts within the community without any designations. Any questions?
Okay, I'll bring it to the council. If any council member has a clarifying question for Fire Marshal Johnston at this time from his presentation? Diana, yes?
You said you're recommending Class A as a minimum. Can you tell me what a Class A roof is and what materials would be eliminated? I assume we wouldn't have wood shingles and is that usually rolled out as all new builds or how does that get implemented?
So the recommendation, that would be all new builds and I will pass it on to Mike Greenlee for that definition.
Yeah, so a Class A, if we do adopt it, is required on all new builds and we would also require it on re-roofs. So it would be required on both of them. And to answer your question, yeah, the Class A is like your concrete, clay, roof tiles, fiberglass, asphalt, comp, shingles, metal roof would all be classified as a Class A for roof coverings.
Well, what would be eliminated? Wood shingles?
Yeah, you wouldn't have wood shingles, wood shake, regular comp, all that would be eliminated.
So basically, anything that would have a combustible aspect would not be allowed.
Okay.
Now, even though they got fire-rated shingles, they still would not be allowed for a Class A roof?
And, oh, go ahead. Degoya has his hand raised also. And you're muted. Rick, you're muted.
I know Diana has more questions, but just to follow up on that question that she had. Can, Michael, can you just describe the difference between A and B? I understand there's A, B, and C, and I assume C is the most combustible. But what's the difference between A and B?
Well, A and B, it's pretty much B. You still can't use the fire shake and shingles. I'm not sure. I know they got fire-rated shingles. I'd have to look into that more because we don't, we don't have to deal, we don't deal with it here. I mean, we're with a Class C. So I know there's, you know, as far as underlayments, different underlayments are provided for a Class A, Class B, and a Class C.
Okay, but just to clarify, Class A would be tile roofs, would be asphalt, shingles, would be metal roofs, concrete, I don't know how much we have concrete, but any kind of stone, obviously. Is that right? All of those are included?
Yeah, on the asphalt comp shingles, they have to be a fiberglass type shingle, not just their typical asphalt shingle.
Okay.
And all those are ID'd and marked on all the packages, the fire rating and everything on them too. When they deliver them on site and that's how we'll verify. A lot of that is in the field that they're using the proper materials.
Okay, so Diana, you have a follow-up?
Yes, on this specific thing. So if we look in our community of houses, there are a lot of them, they're East Coast houses that do have wood, wood shingle roofs right now. So when they went to re-roof, they would be required to come up with, is there an existing alternative for that kind of East Coast look that they could just put in that's fire retardant? Or would they then be forced to switch to a whole other roof material?
Well, I think the alternative would be you have to go with either new construction or addition or, excuse me, alteration, re-roofs. So that would be where the, we could draw the line on that.
But if I had a shingle house, a wood shingle house and I re-roof, I would then have to put in another material with a different kind of look. So I couldn't do the East Coast look. I'd have to find a fire retardant one, right?
There are Class A roof shingles that look like wood.
Okay, that's what I'm.
You would be able to maintain whatever look you look, it just would be a different material.
Okay, I think, is that a fiberglass material, John, that those are made out of, do you know?
I'm not sure, but you know, there's manufacturers of everything out there, but the ones I've seen, I think are more of a tile concrete that looks like wood.
So, Rick, I know you have a question, but can I, can I just interject real quickly on this topic? So would that create a heavier material, obviously, than like a cedar shake? And so would you have to, I guess, beef up your infrastructure on your roof to receive that heavier type of new fiberglass or, you know, composite look?
Yeah, they would have to definitely, if you go with the concrete or clay tile, that definitely would have to boost the understructure of the roof. So that would be, it's, that's easy to do on new construction because they already have a design. If we require it on re-roofs, now you're getting into, you gotta go into the attic. You gotta install trusses and purlins and different struts to pick up that load. So it's a lot more work on a re-roof to install a Class A. If you go with those materials with the.
I'm just saying, if you went with that wood look-alike, you know, that.
You know, I haven't seen it, so I'm not sure what the weight on that is, you know, per pound. I would think it's, it's sure gonna be a lot lighter than your concrete or clay.
Well, yeah.
And I'm gonna say, no, you wouldn't have to beef it up for the fiberglass, just, you know, just what I would think. But I would have to research and look into that.
Sure. Okay, Rick?
No, I understood that Michael's prior comment was one option would be to go with addressing new construction and substantial remodels where the roof would be completely modified because whatever, they're adding a story or they're, or they're substantial work. And but not addressing just the change in the roof, you know, in terms of roofing replacements because it's been there long enough and needs to be replaced. I mean, that's, I'm not saying that's desire, that's an option that I heard you say, Michael.
Yeah, yeah. So new construction would definitely have to comply with Class A. And any re-roofs, you gotta be careful. We require Class A and they go with either clay or tile. Like I said, I'm not sure about the fiberglass shingle look roof material. But then, yeah, if we require them to go Class A with those materials, then they would have to do substantial work in the roof structure to pick up those dead loads, the roof load.
Right, good.
Oh, I have a follow-up question about that. What about just kind of replacing shingles, wood shingles that have been destroyed by crows or, you know, just, you know, patching, right?
Instead of. That, we would not require a Class A. They can go back and replace with what they have. I mean, we might draw a line on how much you're gonna replace, how much damage those birds or crows did, but we'll deal with that later, but.
Typically, there's a percentage, right, Mike, that a percentage of the roof, if you're redoing less than a quarter or something like that, then you don't have to worry about the whole roof.
Yeah, we would have to come up with a percentage, but yeah, that would be same thing that triggers fire sprinklers that we got, so.
Yeah.
And that's 50%, but anyway, yeah, so we would come up with a percentage on that.
So let's close the question from council and open it up to any member of the public who may have. Oh, Diane, you have a follow, another question?
We, he brought up a whole bunch of different topics and there's at least two other areas to question on. So for example, undergrounding of power lines is a huge topic for Atherton.
Yes.
And do you guys have a recommendation for that or a path forward for us?
I don't think so.
I do not have a recommendation because there are multiple ways to go about it. Some cities do special districting that would work with that. We may be able to see if PG&E has any, you know, programs or anything in the future to look into that. And then sometimes it's just part of a requirement that you may put on a homeowner if there's a full development on a site. So we may want to look into what we would consider maybe a high-risk area.
George, George has his hand up, but I have a comment. I mean, I think that you have to underground from the pole to all, you know, to your house now. It's just that undergrounding in front of the, you know, along the right of way is not, is not required. George?
Yes, and just a follow-up to that. That's one of the things I was gonna mention. All new home are required to underground from the pole to their property. So as you go along, that'll happen, but it doesn't cover the poles that are in the roadway with those trees that go down as we experienced this past weekend or so. For that, as John mentioned, it's a PG&E type program. Rule 28 isn't gonna happen any longer. PG&E is focusing those funds on the high-fire hazard zones throughout the state. And as John mentioned, we're not in that zone, so we don't get to take advantage of that. But the special districts is an option. And as the council knows, on your agenda, look ahead, at the November 17th meeting, I believe, we are having a consultant come, present to the council on what that looks like in terms of how to form an underground utility district, what we expect from it, costs, things like that. So we'll advertise that to the community as well. That's on the agenda. And if there's public that want to participate in that conversation, they can attend.
So let's just kind of let that go right now, Diana, and because we're. Good, okay.
One last one on this presentation. You discussed a whole bunch of information that would really be valuable for the people in the Welsh area to have. Has, had they received a mailing at any point that you had some fabulous materials and brochures about how to harden your home? Have they received those and is that possible for them to receive those in the mail in the areas we consider adjacent and at risk?
We believe for the last few years have sent out mailers to all residents and we do quite a bit of advertising, but we do not push heavily all of those requirements or I say recommendations. And so one of the things we are doing right now, that's why I have our risk reduction officer online, just to kind of listen. We are in the process of looking, doing risk assessments and we want to develop specific programs for areas. And so we are looking at what would be west of the Alameda for Menlo Park and Atherton as an area that we want to promote more education, but we want to make sure that we're promoting the right type of education of what would be most beneficial. So we're still evaluating that right now.
I, our, our other council member, Widmer, has logged on. Bill, we're talking about the wildfire home hardening topic. It's number six. And John Johnson just did his presentation and this is just a question. So if you have any questions on what he's recommending in his, like.
No, I, I, I looked, first off, thank you. Thank you for recognizing I showed up. I'm sorry I was late, but I had a doctor's long standing. Yeah, okay. I did, I did look over it and I thought there were some very good ideas, even, you know, for me and where I am in East Atherton to do like putting the, you know, one-eighth inch squares, you know, over the vents and things like that, just to be helpful. But I thought it was, it was a very good document. I have no questions on it. I thought it was well thought out.
Thank you, thank you, Bill, very much. There you are. Okay. All right, so I'm gonna close it from council and just open it up to, oh, Rick, go ahead.
You can do public comment. I've got a couple other comments, they're not questions.
We're gonna come back to comments, okay? So any member of the public have a question or comment at this point about this? Okay, Rick?
I don't see it here.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead with your comment then, Rick?
Great. I have a couple of other questions related to the five topics that were identified in the staff report. The first one was the Class A roof, which we've addressed. The second one is a recommendation that no combustible material be within five feet of structures. I understand the difference between mulch that could catch on fire, bark chips, for example, versus hardscape or dirt. I get that and I understand that's part of what you're targeting. But I'm sure you're also targeting tree limbs and, and plant material. But I just wondered, so is this recommendation that there be zero plant material within five feet of the building?
Uh, yeah, that would be exactly what we're looking at because that could dry out, not be maintained, et cetera.
Okay, so in looking at this, and I know we're not making any decisions today, but I think we're giving some direction to staff about what we'd like you guys to come back with or investigate. I'd like to understand that one more. That's gonna give a lot of Atherton residents heartburn because they've got trees and plant material that are within five feet. And they've invested in all of that and they're not gonna be willing just to remove it. So, but I, and, and I'm sure that, you know, our code hasn't prohibited newly-built houses to have that level of separation. And, and that would be one maybe easy way to go, kind of along the lines that Michael was suggesting with respect to the roof material. But I'd be interested in just looking at what the options are when you guys come back with that. Then the next item is allow permits for hazardous tree removal. You addressed that. And, and I think it would be helpful when you come back just to clarify exactly what those hazardous trees are. Because I know there's a whole classification of hazardous trees. We did address that when we did our heritage tree ordinance. There were a number of trees that were listed in that ordinance that are considered undesirable. So to the extent that this would go beyond those trees, we should know specifically what the recommendation is.
I could just interject and maybe answer your question. I think it's on page 68 of 90. Are you referring to the county of Samhitael?
I'm, I'm just looking at the staff report.
No, but I mean, back, I think Fire Marshal Johnston indicated that it was taken from the list of the county of Samhitael's and it's on page 68 of 90, the third paragraph down.
Great, okay, thank you.
Got it?
Yeah, that is, that is provided.
And so this is just to verify.
Perfect.
Okay, so that's that.
Okay, that's it.
Good, okay, great. Bill?
Yeah, just one, one other comment. It was along the lines of Rick's. I mentioned it to George. I think that, you know, they're recommending trees be 30 feet away. You know, we've seen this before from the Fire District. And I think that perhaps we need to give some allowance for that in our heritage tree contract because right now we can't. You know, they can be precluded from being taken down. But if somebody really felt uncomfortable, such as on the west park, they should be given the right to do that due, due to the, due to this analysis that we got from the Fire District. So anyway, that's it. Thank you very much.
Good, okay. So I think, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Recommendations. Diana, you have a question? You're muted.
Sorry, I do, do want to make some comments before we move off this. I think that the idea of looking at the codes is very interesting and I think we should look deeper at how it actually would apply to our town and which are gonna work for us. I think the idea of voluntary compliance and getting, A, the information out to the entire city, but then have more targeted, specific information for the areas. For the areas on the Welsh Road and the danger areas, the ones that you've identified as being more adjacent to the fire zones. They should actually get something in their mailbox that uh, is summary of this and people move in and new people move out. So whether you've done it in the past, the new people should have it as well. It also should be available in our building department, I think, the kinds of uh, voluntary things we'd like to see done, everything from materials and that. I also would like to see us work with the, the fire department to make that more tailored to our community. And uh, have some meetings, if you were talking about being able to do clearing and things like that in that community. The only way to do that in that community is to engage the community, so maybe at some point in the future. We have a meeting of that area of residents and have them discuss and explain to them the emergency routes. And the, some of the things that you think would be for their safety and we have it open to the public. So those are my comments.
Very, very well said Diana and, and you know, frankly, in my years on council in the past. A, a lot of that has been done on a regular basis, you know, on an annual basis. They're sending out these, you know, trifold mailers that I've seen before and we've had community meetings. Uh, in the Walsh Road area, um, and I, 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 I would just assume that you continue to do that. Um, and I think we've asked that you do that and on a regular basis, because it's. It's not just up to the town to do it, it's really up to the fire district to do this and I think Diana is absolutely correct. So we need to see what you're doing, if you could kind of show us what you're doing and how often you're doing it. And uh, what you have planned to do, can you do that for us?
I certainly can, I'd be happy to uh, involve you in that, I'll show you, and I wrote down good notes with all of your comments, so looking forward to implement.
Thank you, Diana. One more time.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to hug it, but one thing.
Never gonna get through this meeting, ever, 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 no.
All of them are important topics, the one thing that's missing from this whole discussion in terms of building and whatnot is smoke. And we do have smoke and in our own building codes, I don't know if there's anything that pertains to smoke, whether the house, building new houses. Should have air filters, so if you have any information on how we should harden for smoke, you were talking about actual. Preventing fires, but what about managing smoke, which is an ongoing thing that we're gonna, our residents are gonna have to require. So is that, if that's something you could add to the mix to advise us and advise for our building codes going forward, I'd really appreciate that.
That might be a Mike Greenley, uh, uh.
Yeah, we'll have to look, we'll have to look into that.
Yeah. You know?
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody.
Like, you know, but, but building and fire will definitely be, all through this, we'll be working close on every. Everything that we're discussing now, so, you know, we have a good relationship and we're gonna keep it that way, but we'll work real close with Menlo Fire.
Okay, alright, I'd like to close the discussion on this agenda item because we've spent thirty minutes on it and there are other ones. So thank you very much, Fire Marshal Johnson, and uh, Mike, you can't leave because you're. Uh, very uh, important in some of these other ones that we're gonna talk about now. So our, our, our next, our next item on the agenda is uh, our climate action plan progress. And I'd like to introduce uh, Doug Kim, who is our new sustainability coordinator for the town as our consultant. And uh, I've known uh, Doug in many other roles that he's played in San Mateo County over the years. And I haven't had the pleasure to welcome you aboard, but thank you very much for being with us, Doug.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis, it's good to see you again frankly. Um, thank you all, it's hard to believe, but it's already been five years. Since you adopted your first ever climate action plan back in twenty sixteen. And it's time to take stock on where Atherton is because the world has definitely changed. Uh, we're seeing what most scientists say are the real impacts of a warming world and. You know, the globit, global climate change conference that's happening now in Glasgow, um, evidence that um. It's, it's making us all think and pause about what's going on. Um, if you can go to the next slide, Anthony, if you can uh, put up the slides here.
I'll pull it up.
Yes, do a share screen. Um, I'll keep talking here, um, when you adopted the plan back in sixteen, you started by doing something that isn't done often. You actually set targets, there we go, you actually set targets and defined success. Uh, in a couple ways, number one, you wanted to reduce greenhouse gases in the city fifteen percent. From two thousand five levels by twenty twenty, looking corporate last year. And then you also wanted to reduce your carbon emissions forty-nine percent, almost one half by the year twenty thirty. And these goals were targets that were tied. Sorry, can you go to this, uh, next slide please?
Yes, have to get it up here.
I'm sorry, can you go to the previous one? There we go, um, so those two targets that you set in your climate action plan were tied. To the state directives to reduce carbon emissions across California. Under AB thirty-two and SB thirty-two, I think these are measures you guys are familiar with. Um, so if we can go, oh, let's see. Your climate action plan had twenty-five ideas, twenty-five specific measures about how to get there. Um, and at the time, I think the council knew. That this was a long-term plan and it, it was a living document that you would have to come back to. In part because we didn't know at the time how you were going to achieve the twenty thirty goal, so. In the spirit of a living document, we're here on the next slide here to talk about what we found over the first five years. Go to the next slide, Anthony, there you go, um, so back uh, in the climate action plan, you identified twenty-five measures. The bulk of them were focused in on energy and water, and if you can look in that uh, pie chart there. Um, carbon emissions from energy use and water use from our homes primarily. Uh, made up sixty-seven percent, so about two-thirds of greenhouse gas emissions. Transportation and land use made up another eight percent and then solid waste. Um, made up the balance of about uh, twenty-five percent of emissions, so. Your twenty-five measures were really focused in on those three buckets of, of ideas. Next slide please.
Wait, wait, before you leave that slide Doug, uh, what are the ton numbers?
Those tons, those numbers are tons per year of greenhouse gas emissions.
So, so that's what Atherton is emitting in the year two thousand.
Those are actually the uh, uh, number of tons of reductions that you wanted to see in twenty twenty.
Yeah, wait, tho- tho- those are the number of reductions we wanted to see or the number of reductions we saw?
Uh, those are your, uh, your goals, I'll talk about the results in a moment here.
Okay, so those were the goals, okay?
And I understand those tonnage numbers, they're harder, they're hard to visualize, right? Um, but hang with me here, a lot of this is a little bit esoteric. Uh, next slide please. Okay, so when you looked at those twenty-five measures, they fell into two categories. The first were measures that were directly controllable by the town, so one example would be. Replacing your streetlights that have older technology with LEDs. Then you had a category of measures that called for residents and institutions to volunteer. To select greener technologies when they build new facilities or remodel their homes or facilities. So if you went above and beyond what Title twenty-four and Cal Green required. Uh, the climate action plan was counting on a lot of residents and schools to, to choose to be greener. Now, the, the plan also recognized that there were gonna be other measures outside of the town. Primarily from the state of California that would continue to also help reduce carbon emissions. Next slide please.
And with tho- with those outside measures also included peninsula clean energy?
Uh, no, that's what, uh, peninsula clean energy was one of the twenty-five measures, in fact, it was probably your signature measure. That we consider to be a very local measure.
Oh, those would be state, state laws that get passed.
Oh, no.
Yeah, the state, the state is passing laws all the time that are impacting what greenhouse gases will and eventually be admitting. Uh, or eliminating.
Yes.
But wait, I'm, I'm confused by the slide, so the measures controlled by the town, these are measures. That were controlled by the town but are not included in the twenty-five specific measures?
No, no.
Are they, they include, ma- th- th- these would include the twenty-five specific measures? That would be controlled by the town?
Yes, everything on this slide is talking about the twenty-five measures, so about half of them. Were things that you and the, and the, and the town could really control. Um, the other half were things that you, you counted on the, the, the community to do. So the move to peninsula clean energy was an example of something that you really couldn't control. But thankfully, residents and schools decided to switch over to.
So tha- that's exactly my point, so is the, i- is the impact of switching to peninsula clean energy included in bullet point three?
No, no, we're, we're taking credit for that one.
Well, where is that included then?
In number, in the second bullet.
Number two.
Second bullet.
Yes.
Right, dang.
Yeah, because people had a choice to, to go or not to go.
They voluntarily.
Well, sort of. Not really.
Well, you coerced us, Rick, okay.
They had a choice to, to, to.
Come on, let's, let's go on, come on, Doug.
Alright, um, next slide please.
Yes.
Okay, so let's now shift over to some of the headlines about what happened over the past five years. And I'm gonna go into each of these in a little more detail, first off, you hit your target for twenty twenty, so that's the good news. Secondly, uh, as we just talked about, the community did switch over in big numbers. Over to greener energy sources. Number three, the town is amping up its efforts to help reduce organic waste that goes to our landfills. Fourth, and this is probably the most common question I get. Yeah, your neighbors are switching over to electric vehicles and hybrids and we'll talk about that in a sec. And then finally, there's a real big push countywide, and I know the mayor knows about this, to phasing out disposable, single-use. Uh, food service ware when you go out to restaurants and such, so, uh, next slide please. Let's talk about the first there, and this is probably the biggest headline here. Remember, your target in the climate action plan was to reduce your carbon emissions by fifteen percent. Over two thousand five levels by twenty twenty. Now, we don't have the twenty twenty numbers in yet, uh, we're still collecting those, but as of twenty nineteen. The town did reduce its greenhouse gases by almost twenty-nine percent. Now, how, how did you get there? Uh, I've identified three bullets that really highlight some of the big heavy lifters, the first is what we talked about. There was a seventy percent reduction in greenhouse gases from residents that switched over to eco plus. With uh, PCE. Another sixty-eight percent reduced uh, their emissions from schools and institutions. So right there is the um, single most important measure. That the town did over the last five years. And yes, I think you can take credit for it, whether it was opting in or opting out, that was a real reduction that happened. Now, the next bullet is sort of interesting, there was a forty-four percent reduction in greenhouse gases from cars and trucks. Now, the dirty little secret on that is that that was primarily from the state's continuing efforts. To promote uh, cleaner cars and cleaner fuels. So, um, yes, the, the town has been doing what it can to get people out of cars. And there's continuing work on uh, mode shifting people uh, onto bikes and uh, walking. But that reduction was primarily from the state of California through technology advancements.
So Doug, I just want to make a comment, cause um, I, all of us remember um, trying to finalize this. Uh, ca- this um, climate action plan uh, back in twenty sixteen and uh, you know, uh, we. Kind of um, set our sights a little lower, I mean, we, we um, uh. Under, under committed and overachieved, I might say, and so it, I think we did really well in that. But some other uh, cities around us uh, had made uh, very large commitments. But I, even if we had had our target at twenty-five percent reduction, which I think uh, some of us on council was pushing us to do. We would have achieved that and um, the um, the local traffic, the forty-four percent. I mean, clearly, the electric vehicles uh, that abound uh, and from the state pushing cleaner uh. Uh, decals and stuff, uh, I mean, I think that we've, can see a huge impact from the community on that. Anybody else wanna make a comment on this slide? Okay, thank you.
Uh, well, yeah, I will, uh.
Good.
Doug, that's very interesting, because I, I looked at the fi- forty-four percent and I went, wow, that is odd. Because the staff report said that only five percent of our cars were EVs, but in fact.
More than that.
Well, but we'll come back to that, but that's what the staff report said.
Well.
Uh, I mean, if you want to go into that, it, the staff report also identified that eighteen twenty-three. Uh, vehicles in Atherton were EVs and if that's five percent, then the total number of vehicles is something like thirty-six thousand. So, so there, but my point is, in no case was it anywhere close to forty-four percent. And you've clarified that the forty-four percent really comes from the technology changes required by the state of California. Which makes perfect sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we'll peel that onion back in, in a, a couple slides a little bit more, but um. Yeah, the bottom line is that you did hit your target, whether it was to, due to technology. Well, some of it was due to local actions though, uh, that's important to keep in mind.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, next slide, Anthony. Thank you, so, uh, this was your signature uh, move here. Uh, as of today, ninety-eight percent of the community has switched over to PCE primarily to the eco plus mode. Um, now the way PCE has their programs, the eco plus program is moving towards being a hundred percent carbon free. So um, eventually.
I, I just need to add in, it, as of January first of this year, it was a hundred percent carbon free.
Okay.
So, so it is there.
There you go. Now, this is one of those win-win programs that was relatively painless for many of us, right? Um, not only did we do something good for the earth, but there was a total in Atherton of, of savings of about three hundred fifty-eight thousand. In utility bills, so pretty painless way, but um, it was one you counted on and it delivered.
Okay.
That's right, next slide please, Kathy. Alright, third thing, and many of you are aware of this, um, the town is focusing on reducing organic waste. In a real partnership with the county, so many of you know that if you look at our local uh, landfills, about fifty percent of the volume. Is organic waste, these are things that break down in the normal world. But often can't break down when they're dumped into these mega landfills and have no access to light and air. So there was recent state law, SB thirteen eighty-three. Which said we need to do something about organic waste, and so it calls on. All of us to reduce seventy-five, five percent of our organic waste from landfills by the year twenty twenty-five. It's only three years away, and so green waste recovery and all of the, the um. Uh, solid waste haulers are working, working overtime to try to get organic waste out of our um, solid waste landfill streams. Now, thirteen eighty-three also requires that we reduce twenty percent of the edible food. Waste that's going to our landfills, now, we all in our refrigerators and homes. Are guilty of disposing of edible food, um, but thirteen eighty-three really calls on food providers. To find ways to reduce that kind of waste.
That's probably, but primarily though, um, to commercial and schools and things like that. Where they're preparing food in a cafeteria and they have extra food and they need to deliver it to a. Um, you know, like second harvest or something like that, or in the stores, which many of the stores already are doing. which many of the stores already are doing, sending uh, you know, stale bread or dip bread that's passed the use by date up to um places where, you know, second, you know, second harvest or to uh, you know, uh San Anthony's and things like that. So that was from reading that thirteen eighty-three, that was the target. Get the commercial guys who have extra food, not to throw it away, but to give it a second life and and um, and you, George and I have been talking about doing, you know, making sure that happens, so.
Absolutely. And and that's an example of a program that while it's not targeted at residents, um, we all could uh, do a better job in being disciplined about our grocery purchases.
Yeah.
Well, I I just have to make a comment and I can't be still. Um, you know, I've got my compost bin at my sink and I'm always uh, using a compostable bag and I put all my scraps and stuff in it. But then with this new waste taller that we have, I'm supposed to just then put that into the black garbage bin, which doesn't make sense to me at all because in my black garbage bin gets everything else except, you know, for recycling uh, cardboard and cans and bottles.
They have a single stream process. So the black bins get entered, will be entered into a single stream process where everything in the black bin will be sorted out and the organics will be pulled out. And anything that's recyclable that you put in there will also be pulled out and then reprocessed.
So I shouldn't even have to separate my recyclables?
Well, they'd like you to do that. We'd like you to do that because you're just going to drive up the cost if you don't, but.
I would, I need a tour. I want a tour.
Yeah, it said when the, when the uh covid is a little bit better shape, but it'll probably be early next year.
But there is, Anthony just released and uh, Greenways just released a video tour of how their facility that Councilmember Wood was talking about operates uh, in the last Atherton online and on the town's website. You should find a link to that. It's pretty uh, interesting video.
Thank you.
Yeah, as you said, Mary Lou.
I think we're kind of uh, gonna run out of time here.
Okay, let me pick up the pace here. Uh, next slide, please, Anthony. All right, this is what we were talking about here. And I want to be be clear here. The numbers that I'm citing here are uh, as of twenty eighteen, so three years have passed. Uh, I know I I've, I have three uh, electric cars that I didn't have in twenty eighteen. So please take these numbers with a grain of salt. As of three years ago, what we saw is that citywide there was a twelve-fold increase in the number of electric vehicles over the prior six years. And as of twenty eighteen, five percent of the cars uh, were electric. I suspect that when we get twenty twenty-one numbers, that that spiked up a lot.
Hmm.
Uh, hybrid electric vehicles grew actually faster during that twenty twenty to twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twelve to twenty eighteen period. Uh, my hunch is that electric cars are now outstripping them in terms of sales. Uh, but in a clear sign that electric technology is is here, the police department is investing in hybrid electric cars. And they're looking at um electric patrol cars as early as twenty twenty-three, once they're considered pursuit rated. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, and the fifth sort of headline that you, many of you are aware of is that Atherton is now part of a statewide move to phase out disposable forks, uh, thraws, the things that you get at at restaurants and that students get at school. Um, this has long been a problem and the days of getting those without asking for them are over. And when you get them, they need to be recyclable or compostable. Next slide, please. Okay, so we really uh, tried to focus in on the glass being half full here and the good news stories, but there are challenges that lie ahead. So uh, if I can just sort of summarize what we just talked about here, we plucked a lot of the low hanging fruit and were able to reach our twenty twenty target. Twenty thirty is a little more difficult. Um, but here's a spoiler alert. If we expect that the state and other outside entities are going to continue to push technology, we can probably get ninety percent of the way towards our twenty thirty target. And Anthony, if you wouldn't mind pushing forward two slides. There was this uh, chart here that you might have seen. Um, it's a, there's a couple of things going on here, but um, where you see that line going out towards the year twenty fifty on top of the orange trend, that's what would happen if there was no climate action plan, if there was no peninsula clean energy. If the, if Atherton continued on a business as usual trend, right? But we know that we're doing a lot of things to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So if you look at the bottom of that uh, green uh, sliver there, that's where um, greenhouse gas emissions are going in the city over the next thirty or so years. And while you can't quite see it, in the year twenty thirty, that green sliver gets us almost to that target of a forty percent, uh, forty-nine percent reduction. So that's really the power of what the state is doing to clean up its power plants and other um, sources of greenhouse gases. But that doesn't get us all the way to our twenty thirty target. And so the the city's going to need to do more to reach that twenty uh, thirty target. If you could go back, Anthony, two slides back again. Now, in addition to that, you're hearing this at the Scotland uh, global conference here. There's a lot of talk, not about getting a forty-nine percent reduction by twenty thirty, but getting to net zero, which you all sort of understand, is to get your carbon emissions down to zero. State of California has been talking about a statewide target by the year twenty forty-five, which sounds futuristic, but that's only twenty-three years away. So the town has made a commitment to speak to the mayor's comment earlier about how ambitious you want to be, but at some point, the council may want to consider, do you want to raise the bar or lower the bar depending on your perspective and try to get to net zero? If you want to, that line that we saw has to go from forty-nine percent reduction to a hundred percent reduction, you know, in the next few years. Uh, and then the remaining challenge is probably the biggest one. When we look at the twenty-five measures that you had in the plan, not all of them were able to move forward uh, as of now, uh, because there are barriers, funding, uh, consensus, uh, sometimes red tape. And so um, we need to continue to uh, push residents and schools to uh, look at going greener. And we need to break through some of the barriers, funding and otherwise, to making those twenty-five measures happen. Uh, next slide, please, Anthony. Uh, so a lot of what we talked about is again, getting your neighbors when they remodel their homes to voluntarily go to a higher level of green um, appliances and fixtures. And so the, we're going to be putting out a lot of electronic um, information, educating residents and schools about what they can do. Uh, we're also going to have uh, printout flyers for Mike's department to uh, hand out at the building counter. We also want to reach out to contractors and architects to urge them to take advantage of rebates and try to make the case that there's a good return on investment if you go greener. Next slide, please. Uh, go to your last slide, please. Uh, so um, there is a, an update to the climate action plan that's in the offing. Uh, like we said before, we need to figure out how we're going to reach that twenty thirty target. And uh, that means refining some of the measures that we uh, approved five years ago, maybe adding some more measures. Uh, and that update could come in twen- next year, actually. We're continuing to work with the county to provide you with options about how we reach that twenty thirty target. And last slide, please, Anthony. Uh, next steps, we're going to continue, as I said, working with the county. Number one is we want to just firm up what the uh, missions for the city looked like in the year twenty twenty. We want to clarify how close we get to the year twenty thirty target with some of these other measures and then come back to the council with an update to the plan showing how we think we can get to the twenty thirty target and seeing what your appetite is for uh, additional measures. Uh, and then we're going to continue to implement the balance of those measures from the current climate action plan. A lot of public outreach and we're going to find ways to track the progress that we've made, including uh, electric vehicle sales. So I'm going to stop there and turn it back to the mayor.
You're muted, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, I had a coughing fit earlier, so um, thank you, Doug. This was very well done and I'm so happy that we finally do have you on board to help us uh, with all of this. We've uh, struggled just with our E P C uh, committee and our planning staff for many years on this, but uh, you do bring it in perspective for us and uh, it does seem like we're doing some of the right things. So I um this is just a um, receive and file the report. Uh, at this point, we have have nothing to uh, rule on or approve or make a motion to, but I do want to give any member of the public an eye, opportunity just to uh, make a comment uh, briefly and then we will move on to our next items.
I I had a question, though.
Oh, okay. Uh, could we let the public do it first?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. And seeing no member of the public wanting, I think everybody's. Hi, James, how are you?
Hi, I'm doing well. Thank you. I'm James Talea. I'm a resident of Sunnyvale, but I work with um, many uh, homeowners in Atherton as part of my job. I'm a senior energy coach and um the community programs director for the Home Intel Energy Savings Program run by Home Energy Analytics and funded through P G N E, all the rate payers actually pay for it. Um, um, and P G N E administers it. And I I've worked with um um, previous staff involved with um, sustainability efforts. I look forward to uh, checking in and introducing myself uh, to to Mr. Kim um, uh, when I get a chance, but I just wanted to raise um, the information level about the Home Intel program. It's free to um, to Atherton clients, uh, to Atherton homeowners and renters. Um, and it's important because uh, our metrics for the roughly a hundred um, homeowners participating in our program, and there were forty in an earlier program about um nine years ago, but of the hundred, um, they've saved about eighty-five metric tons per year of greenhouse gases. Um, and that's over a one billion BTUs of gas and electricity energy saved. Um, and that's about thirty percent of Atherton's um, twenty sixteen cap goal for reducing energy waste in homes. Um, and that's only with a hundred homes participating, so we could get more and and help contribute to that. And it's already funded and it already exists. Um, now the the metric tons of savings will go down um, because now the electricity is a hundred percent clean. Um, but twenty-three tons are from gas reduction. And so um, that's certainly uh, still greenhouse gas, even with the hundred percent carbon. So just wanted to offer that information and there are multiple members uh, of this um, council who are actual contributing to that reduction as home intel clients.
So I wonder if any members of our council are uh, participating.
They are.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah, okay, good. Thank you. Thank you. This is new to me. I I was not aware of it and George, maybe, I mean, is there a way that he can um, we can integrate that into a uh, news blast or something to let residents know or is it?
He can certainly connect with Mr. uh, Talea uh, about the program, uh, whether or not we can use public resources to promote company.
We've been in the Athertonian three, three times already in the last four years.
The living or the Athertonian?
The Athertonian, the town's newsletter. Yeah.
Well, okay.
Well, there we are, George. What have you been doing?
I know.
Not reading, apparently.
He doesn't read as Athertonian, but s- some of us don't either so much.
It's a publicly funded thing.
Yeah, it's not a private uh, enterprise, is it? Yeah. Right, that's what I was thinking. I mean, that's why I suggested it. Thank you very much. So uh, any other member of the public? I'll let, yes, who?
Bruce Nagel has his hand raised.
Bruce, where are you? Oh, I see you smiling, uh, and you're muted. There you are.
Okay, so I'm unmuted at this point.
Good.
We want to welcome Atherton to join the jurisdictions that have adopted reach codes, which I think is a key component that I haven't heard you talk about specifically, but it's a way to start to drive down, getting um, these all-electric appliances. They're going to take advantage of this great.
Thank you. Bruce, I just going to interrupt you because we have an agenda item on reach codes in 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 this meeting that we're trying to get to.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought it was this part of it.
No, this is not it. No.
Okay.
Okay, great. All right, Bill, I'm going to bring it back to you.
Yeah, so um, I just was wondering whether or not there was some research into what the schools were doing, since they are in Atherton, and I don't know if we include those in the savings, but you know, the schools have been doing some, some improvements in their, you know, facilities as well as uh, working with the children to do a better job of sorting and get the recycling up, even though they're not part of our count and they don't even participate in the green waste contract. But they are in the town and we should, uh, are we are we counting that? Are you doing any research into that?
Uh, the short answer is yes. Uh, we're trying to quantify what the good stuff they've done, but yeah, the private schools have really stepped up in particular.
No, the private schools are okay and they're in, you know, they're in our count, but it's the public schools that we have. We have quite a number of them and and I I just would like to know what they're, what they're, what steps they're doing, even though they're not under our jurisdiction, so to speak, but we but they are in our town and they should count towards what our goals are.
Absolutely. So for example, we're trying to quantify the benefit of M A's new STEM building. Uh, they got a merit award for their energy conservation features and we want to take credit for that. So yes.
Bill, thank you very much. Anybody else? Um, Diana, you're muted, so if you want to say something.
Yes, I'd like to say that I'm glad to see us looking again at our cap. And one of, up to date, what we have really focused a lot on is voluntary compliance for people. I think that the world has changed a lot and I think we need to look at our uh, possibly doing reach codes, which I know we're going to talk about next. But also expanding our strategy that we had before, which was providing information in voluntary. So in looking at the materials, which we're going to talk about next, there's a lot of voluntary measures that we could propose now and create a whole new list of additional things above and beyond the the reach codes that we're going to talk about next. And I'd like to see us put efforts there and uh Douglas has made a long list of things we can do to update. I think the list is awesome. We're not talking about that here. But I looking forward to next, at our next meeting on this topic that we actually do some of that stuff. And thank you, Doug. Appreciate it.
Good. Okay, Doug, thank you very much. I'm going to wrap this up and we're going to go on.
Question, you're you're not looking at the reactions page. It shows you everyone whose hands up.
I see one person.
Now, there's, well, Bruce still has his hand up. Anyway, I've got a question and a comment.
I'm glad you interrupted me.
No problem, no problem. I'm used to it.
You're you're interrupting me, yes.
So uh, first, Doug, I have a question. Uh, are, do we have a plan to update uh, the community action program? I I I know what you presented on, we we asked in twenty sixteen and you said that there's been a lot of change and I just wonder what the game plan is to deal with that going forward.
Yeah, you're talking about the climate action plan update?
I am.
Yes. So uh, the first thing we have to do is we have to get our numbers straight and that's why we're working with the county to update all of that. I do expect that we're going to be back before the council in twenty twenty, next year uh, with some thoughts about how the town can move forward.
Great, that that addresses the question. Thank you. Uh, two things that would be very helpful to me in the material that was presented. One is uh, in in your table one, you gave the CO2 reduction targets for twenty twenty and twenty thirty. And in your PowerPoint presentation, you showed what the reductions were, I think. Uh, I'm for one of the years, so maybe the last year or but but what would be helpful to me is to see what those reductions have been for each year that meets our goal, because when I ran the numbers, I came up with a a total goal of ten thousand some odd metric tons and and I don't have any way to to get to the twenty-eight point eight percent that you showed. So if we could just see what the savings have been in the different categories over each of those years, that would help us to focus on, you know, what our goals were and and what our measurements have been. Um, the second comment I have is, I I had mentioned earlier, uh, when Elizabeth and I The second comment I have is, I, I had mentioned earlier, when Elizabeth and I talked about the, the EVs, the staff report says that there are now 1823 EVs in Atherton up from, or no, that's as of 2018. And that's, that's up from 148 in 2012, which is a great increase. And no doubt, since 2018, that number is somewhat higher. But it also says that 5% of the cars in Atherton are EVs, which my guess is that maybe it's 20%. Because if you run the numbers, there's no possible way we have 36,000 cars in the town. My guess is, you know, I don't, I don't know, but my guess is we have about three cars a household, which would be about 7,500 cars. So if you could just look at those numbers and come back to us with the correction, that would be great. Thank you.
Will do.
Okay, is that, is that off right now? So Doug, we'll close this item and thank you very much. And look forward to seeing the revised cap come before us again. So I'm going to give the council a little bit of a decision, joint decision, because we skipped over the reach code to bring item number six up. But we do have, I think, a relatively short presentation from the leaf blower committee. If we wanted to have them do that next and then the reach code afterwards. I see. No, no, no. Diana, okay. So then we want to just bring the reach code item up now. Diana?
I would like to push the leaf blowers off because we have on the phone here, a bunch of people. We have people, the comments and letters, the leaf blower, we can just put to the next meeting, please.
Of course.
Is that okay, Bill? Who's doing the presentation? I just.
Well, we've got, we've got.
It would take about five minutes, but.
I know. That's what I was thinking.
All right. Yeah, I'll defer. I just think the next topic is hugely important and.
Yeah, we're going to spend time.
It absolutely is hugely important, but you know, so that's why we're trying to juggle things a little bit. Bill, why don't you go ahead?
Sure. Okay, Anthony, go ahead and put the slides up if you would, please. And so essentially, this is item five. You know, Diana and I were subcommittee to look into what we should do with regards to leaf blowers and a leaf blower ban. And, and the charts, I know that he distributed it and I guess he's trying to get up. You know, I'm going to talk to you just very briefly. There have been some new laws since we got into the discussion about, hey, there's, there's these leaf blowers and a lot of people are against them. What, what the current situation is and what our proposal is for your consideration. Okay? So if you move on, talk about the new law, there was, you know, our assemblyman, Mark Berman, Pat, you know, authored a letter AB 1346. Well, it had some dates and it had some things that they said, let's go ahead and let's stop these, you know, using these gas powered tools. And let's try and get it done by, by, it meant some of them by 2024, some of them also by 2028. But then they had some words in there that said, well, but the Air Resource Board is going to create, you know, rebates. And they have a substantial amount of money for that. And the laws are going to be looked at by a state board to determine whether or not they're feasible and whether or not they need to move the dates out. So what we know now and what we believe is really the case is these new regulations are going to come out in July, in July. And, and the ban right now is looking like they will not be selling gas powered tools by 2024. That includes lawn mowers, power washers, chainsaws, and these small off-road engines that, you know, like on these little go-kart things. Then there's also a provision in there that says by 2028, gas powered generators will also be eliminated. They have to be zero emission. But then there was the weasel words again on whether or not that really is feasible and is there something that we can do in between? So that's where they are. So we're looking forward to the state stopping the sale. But you could buy one on December 31st, 2023, and you could use it for as long as its life. So we didn't feel that that was adequate. Okay? We feel that on the next chart, the new law, while bringing attention to this issue, okay, doesn't really affect any ban per se. And we thought we should have stronger, you know, take stronger action here, both from a polluting standpoint as well as from the noise. So we took some ideas. Next chart, which is our recommendation. We'd like to ban the loudest and most polluting garden products on residential properties by both residents and gardeners effective January 2023. Originally, we were going to do it earlier, but this thing got delayed over a period of time. We would permit four-stroke, okay? If you remember, the four-stroke engines, gas blowers didn't emit the same noise level and, and pollution level when we first looked into this. So we would permit the four-stroke on commercial, educational and town properties during the rainy season, which has been defined by the city manager is 15 October through 15 March. And that will be used on grassy fields only, where they have leaves and things like that that may be wet. Battery powered blowers would have to be used on hard surfaces such as the tennis courts, the streets, the pavements, because they'll be affected there. We will restrict gas powered equipment during spare the air days with an AQI above 50 and a PM measured above 35. And these are levels that were set by the World Health Organization. This can be viewed on several free apps. A good one is this one I showed you and I, the next chart, I will show you today's readings. So if you go to that next chart, you'll see, first off, it said that the rating this morning was 25 and the air quality was good. But then if you go down to the bottom, it gives you really the detail. It gives you the particulate information, which, you know, the particulates are what are causing people to have asthma and things like that. And so we're, we're saying, you know, keep that below 35. Today's rating was 21 because maybe people were burning in their fireplaces and things like that. But it also has the ozone level, nitric oxide, and as well as, you know, carbon monoxide. So it's, it's a very good free app, my AQI dot, you know, air, okay? So if you want to get it, it's publicly available. Anybody can get it. And we could use that to say, hey, it's a spare the air day according to this. Okay? Now, when can you do what? You know, whether they're electric or whether they're gas powered, they make a lot of noise. So we thought we should look at the time, because this is one of the things that we brought up. Until the ban, gas powered tools can be used only on weekdays from eight to five. No weekend, after this ordinance passes, once we agree it, no weekend usage of gas powered. But electric, electric can be used not only weekdays, but on the weekends, on the, the times associated with our noise ordinance. And of course, if we have an emergency, you know, that's all exempted. All right, next slide, the next steps. What we want is your comments. You consider this and come back and let us know. Then from there, we would have to work with staff to develop an ordinance. There is $30 million of small business transition costs that's out there that you can do for a trade-in, that, that the, the businesses, the, the, the gardener's companies can go in and apply for this money. And once it's fully developed, we want to point our gardeners that have licenses, they're the ones who we know who they are, to the offerings. And then also, I'm sure Sam Seda would get, and the county would be pleased to get involved to partner and help sponsor this. We want to have, obviously, we have to have a public hearing and, and the EPC, you know, is going to develop both multilingual, well, multilingual education material, and they've already agreed to start on doing this. So the last thing is, okay, what about enforcement? Thank you for the badge, Mr. McCauley. I grabbed it from your website. We want to have educational hangers on the green carts. That's where the gardeners are, that's what they see. Okay? They take the, many people have the gardeners take out the green carts and out. We can put hangers on there to notify them. We'd also would have mailers, you know, through and, and use our email web blasts that, that we do to announce this. If we're going to put things on the green carts, we'll need to speak to Green Waste and get their coordination. And that might require a little bit of money that we could throw into the trash rates. Periodic, periodic visits from the code enforcement, I, you know, I, I just, it's just throwing something out. The first one, you give them further education. The next one, you find. The third one, you find the resident and the gardener. The fourth one, if they have a business license, you discuss maybe revoking it. But we want to have the council give us input, the city manager give us input, PD to give us input, because this enforcement thing, it, you know, would take a lot of time. And, and so we just want to get that. And that is the, that's what we've come up with. And I, you know, we feel pretty strongly about the recommendations, but we're willing to go to whatever you want. Thank you.
Thank you, Subcommittee Diana and Bill. It was well put together. And I'm sorry, we were feeling so rushed about all of this. The reach codes is a very, very important topic and, but this is also an important topic. And so I see Diana, a member of the Subcommittee, you have your hand up.
Yes, I wanted to clarify a couple of the points. One of the reasons for Spare the Air Day and the reasons why I recommended this that didn't come out in that presentation. On, after heavy smoke days, there are a layer of toxic ash that sits all over our properties, our cars, our everything. And people tend to blow that with their blowers the next day. So we have been, we're, one of the recommendations there is to ban the use of wall blowers on Spare the Air Days, using the particulate matter as a measurement. There is not right now, and we researched this, there is no existing measure for that soot that sits on the ground. They don't currently have that. In the future, I imagine we're going to need something like that in our air quality. People are going to be able to tell us more specifically when we shouldn't do it. But for now, we want with Spare the Air. The other thing that we did that's a little unique from other towns is that we had run the test, if you recall, at the last time we discussed this, the city pushed back and said, well, let's run a test in our own facilities and see what it's like to do it. And when we did that, we found that the electric was not as, as effective during the rainy season when the leaves are wet and they pose a slip hazard for people. So you'll see that one of the things we proposed was carving out that little window of the rainy season to be treated differently than the rest of the year. Because the rest of the years, we can blow with the, the less powerful ones. And maybe we'll allow them to use the more powerful ones just during the rainy season. I've not seen that somewhere else. So that's kind of unique to us. So we put a little thought into it and I think that I like the way Bill presented it's a little easier, but there's more behind it. So on some future date, we should probably discuss it further.
Sure.
Yeah, we didn't think we had, I didn't think that we wanted to get into so much detail.
All the detail at this point. No, I think, I think at this point, what we're just doing is we're receiving your report. We thank you very much for putting that all together and all the hard work you did do for it. And, uh, to provide feedback on our next steps. I mean, if we wanted to agree that this is something that we, you know, it was really clarified the, the law that went, is going into effect and the need for us to kind of take some actions to kind of make that law have some teeth, actually, if you will. And I appreciate that. I mean, we could give a staff the direction to maybe do a draft ordinance to bring back to us for a more thorough, detailed, you know, discussion, seeing how that would work. And, you know, at a future council meeting, though we have more time. So that's, that's a suggestion I'm just kind of throwing out to at this point, if we wanted to do that. Or we can just, you know, say, we'll receive, we're receiving your report and we will put this on a future agenda item where we would have more time. Maybe a complete study session that we have. This is, I just feel so rushed about this. We just don't have enough time to go into.
Madam Mayor, if I could make a suggestion.
Of course, please.
You, you've got the, you've got the charts now. And so perhaps in spare time, each person can look at that. And if they have questions, they're welcome to come to Diana or I, if they have input.
Well, I don't think you can do that exactly.
Oh, well, they have to go to George. Yeah, they should go to George. During your meeting with George, give your questions and give your ideas that, hey, I don't like this. Or, and then from there, we can revise it and then work with staff on the ordinance.
Is that, Diana, does that feel good to you?
Sure.
Rick, I'm going to tap on your little bobbing head there. What, are you, are you with us? Rick?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. You, you, your, your visual is just cracking me up because.
Well, I, I need to leave to go to the walk through the park.
I know, I know. I'm so sorry. So, um, okay, George, is that enough direction?
Yes, thank you.
So let's move on to our big item. It's the reach code. And I have to say, you know, we have 36 minutes to, to maybe go over this. And it's just not going to be enough time. So I think that we've got, we've got Mike Greenley, our building official, and Rafael Reyes of Peninsula Clean Energy is going to give us a presentation. There's also Farhad Farahmand of TRC Energy Services, who's a consultant of PCNE, PCE. And then we also have our member of Atherton's Environmental Programs Committee, Stacy Miles here, as a representative from the EPC committee, who also wants to make a presentation and a comment on behalf of the EPC. And I understand she's got five minutes that she'd like to present. So I, I would like to open it up and have PCE give their presentation at this point. And we'll see where we go from there. George, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, this, Madam Mayor, just in the interest of that time, and Councilmember DeGoli as, has to, has to leave for the next meeting. Perhaps to preface this is, take, take the presentations, take the comments from the public. And then we can punt this to a future meeting dedicated specifically to it. As maybe a special meeting in January to discuss, November, December are quite booked at present.
Okay, that, I think that's an excellent idea because I honestly do not want to feel rushed. And I want us to be able to ask the hard questions. This is really, really important. And as Councilmember Hawkins and Wollians did say, that, you know, she's got lots of questions. And it's an, it's an important thing for us to look at. Okay? Is that okay with everyone? Bill?
Yep.
Okay, Diana, I don't see you, but.
I'm here. The only caveat is that we were given in our packet a timeline. So if we actually wanted to adopt something, it looked like things had to happen in December into February. So George, if we push everything off into January, is there a set cycle for us to make, to take action? Or was that just a recommended thing?
That was a recommended thing.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's, that's a fungible timeline.
So we, if we put it off, we still can, can participate in taking action quickly. Okay?
So, so if I could just make one quick, I noted that the, the presentation is, is exactly the same as the presentation that we'd seen when we first discussed this. So perhaps we could skip the presentation and then have some further discussion that's more in depth. But that's just my suggestion.
I don't think it's the same. Sorry, the, the, this is not the same as.
I don't know that it's not.
It's not the same as the cap. So this is.
It's the same as what was presented to us when we first looked at, when we looked at this a while ago.
This was, that was back in 19, at 2019, or was it?
I think it was 20, I think it was 2020, actually, when they brought this to us. George, what, George, when, when did the guy come to us when we were, and make this presentation?
Do you remember when it was? It was.
2018 or 2019. It was in July of either 2018 or 2019.
But then he came back.
It was 2019. It was not 2020. It was 2019. And you were late to the meeting.
We were in person.
Because you were in Bakersfield or something, doing something.
That was the first time we looked at it. Then this, then this presentation came back again for, to get us to go reconsider. But that's okay. We can look through it again. But it's the same thing we've seen before.
I think we need to go over the presentation because they're current rules and we need to bring everybody here who's from the public up to speed on what we're talking about.
Exactly. Okay. Um, Rafael, are you going to do this for us?
I will lead this off. Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Rafael Reyes, Director of Energy Programs for Peninsula Clean Energy. Thank you to the mayor, council and staff for inviting us to present. I have with me our lead consultant, Farma, Farad Farahmand, who's probably the leading expert, frankly, not only in the state, possibly in the. I have with me our lead consultant, Farma, Farad Farahmand, uh, who's probably the leading expert, frankly, not only in the state, possibly in the nation, on local government codes um, like this, and we have TRC under contract as part of our, our, our program. I'm going to provide a high level um, intro and then turn it over to Farhad to uh, walk through the specifics. Much of this you may have seen before, uh, the fundamentals of the reach code um, are um, have not changed, although some of the context has changed. And we can also speak to the next code cycle, which is also relevant to this discussion. Um, by way of intro, most of you are likely familiar with Peninsula Clean Energy, where you're not-for-profit uh, energy service provider, um, with the mission of reducing greenhouse gases, provide a sustainable, affordable energy solutions. We provide the energy that is distributed on the uh, wires, if you will, that are owned and operated by PG and E uh, to your customers. And we're pleased to have delivered already um, over eighteen million dollars in annual cost benefit to um, residents and businesses in our service territory through the service. Uh, next slide, so briefly, um, uh, reach codes are a term of art, if you will, uh, that reference local enhancements to the building code. As you uh, are likely aware, every three years, uh, local governments adopt the state building code and may make enhancements to those codes at any time. Um, it is helpful to do them on cycle um, with the uh, state um, codes, but that is not required. These particular reach codes address building electrification, which is the reduction of the use of methane, toxic methane gas in, in the homes, as well as increasing EV readiness, um, and uh, promoting their use as a result. Uh, and substantial economic opportunities, uh, and energy performance, and applies specifically to new construction here in this um, in this case. Although there are conversations in some jurisdictions now around existing construction. Next slide, um, won't spend a lot of time on this. I think everyone's well aware about the uh, uh, climate change impacts that are already widely seen in terms of fires, droughts, and so forth. But I should also note um, that uh, there are significant economic opportunities by our modeling by twenty forty-five. Electric vehicles should deliver over fifty million dollars in benefits to residents in uh, San Mateo County. And that's money instead of going out the door to petroleum companies that stays in people's pockets, that they can then invest in their local um, businesses and the like, or however they choose. Next slide. Um, this is part of a regional program. It's not only covering San Mateo County, but it's in partnership with Silicon Valley Clean Energy that covers most of Santa Clara County. Through this program that began in two thousand nineteen, our two service territories now account for twenty-four out of the fifty adopted um, local reach codes in the state. Um, and to support local governments in moving forward on this, we provide model codes, no-cost technical assistance, and grant funding, and the town of Atherton has received a ten thousand dollar grant um, as part of this uh, program to consider adopting uh, reach codes. Um, uh, so with this, with that, actually, I'd like to turn it over to Farhad to speak to the details on the code. Thank you, Farhad.
Rafael, uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Farhad with TRC, getting into some of the technical specifics uh, with regards to the reach codes. There's three reach code options. There's the natural gas ban, the all-electric required, and all-electric preferred. These are in order of stringency. Natural gas ban doesn't allow for a gas lateral in its municipal code uh, amendment. It is not bound to the triennial building code cycle, meaning that once you adopt it, it is indefinitely part of it. And there's traditionally been very limited exceptions with this option. Another building reach code option is the all-electric required, which dictates specific appliances be electric. Exceptions are allowed here, um, and pre-wiring is required for those accepted appliances. This is a building code amendment, meaning that every new building code, every three years, it would have to be re-adopted. The all-electric preferred reach code is, allows mixed-fuel buildings to get constructed as long as they are higher performance via energy efficiency measures or battery storage. State code, as I'll get into later, is essentially becoming in twenty twenty-three, an all-electric preferred code. And uh, this is, i- if we're adopting a twenty twenty-two reach code, which I'll discuss the pros and cons of that later, uh, this would not be an option anymore. Here's some of the cost-benefit impacts. Um, we're not gonna, in the interest of time, we'll get into too much detail on these, but the key takeaway is in the blue box at the top right. Meaning that there are construction cost savings when, in a new construction scenario, if you do not hook up gas to your building. And if you use those construction cost savings to install extra solar on top of what is already required by the state, you become immediately cost-effective. And this is a win-win for the climate as well as the budget.
All right, can I just have to ask a quick question here?
Yes.
What is this estimate um, done on what size of a home? A single, new, single-family home in the Bay Area? That's a large uh, area, and what is, give me some perspective.
No problem. So these studies have been done for a range of uh, building sizes. The largest home that has been examined is twenty-seven hundred square feet, um, but we have looked at multifamily dwellings.
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. I'm not cutting in and out?
Yep.
Uh, this, this happens once, once in a while, I'm sorry about that. Is this any better?
I think so.
Right now.
Talk to me a bit.
Okay, I'll try. Uh, the analysis has been done for a range of different uh, home sizes. This one uh, includes a twenty-four hundred and a twenty-seven hundred square foot home.
Okay. That's not really relevant for Atherton.
So one thing to, to consider is that the same basic four appliances uh, exist, whether, whether you're in a one thousand square foot multifamily dwelling or in a very large uh, home. And those same appliances will use approximately the same amount of energy. Now, it does, now it does, not the same energy, but energy use intensity, but per square foot, um, regardless of the size of the home. Um, this has come up in a lot of different cities where there's, there's concern about whether the analysis is representative of their construction. And, you know, in nearly all scenarios, actually, I can't think of a scenario where it's not true, um, the whole results hold. And uh, it is largely due to the incremental cost of going from a gas to electric appliance and incremental operational differences as well.
Okay, all right.
Um, we have also looked at non-residential buildings, and again, these same results do, much larger buildings, but different systems, of course. Okay, EV code definitions. Just to lay the foundation, so we're all saying this, speaking the same language. There's three speeds to electric vehicle charging. The first is level one, it's a standard home receptacle that charges at three to four miles an hour. The next is level two, which is your two forty-volt receptacle that you might have on your refrigerator or your clothes dryer. This charges at ten, twenty miles an hour, and anything above that is considered level three, this is like a Tesla charger. There's also different degrees of readiness that you would have with your electric vehicle codes. There's EV capable, where you have a conduit and panel capacity only. On top of EV capable is EV ready, where you actually install the wiring and the receptacle. And then the, on top of the ready would be EV charging station where you actually provide the charging cable. The cities have uh, the ability to change the percentage of parking spaces.
You're, you're cutting in and out.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry. I'm not sure what is going on.
Keep going, now we're hearing you, just move on.
Um. I think I just have to project, so I will, I will try to do my best to do that. The main reason why we're adopting reach codes now for new construction is because the cost of retrofit is about four to five times higher, and that's a conservative estimate. And we have these long-term goals for electric vehicle adoption. Uh, there's bans on combustion engine vehicles in twenty thirty-five in California, and we really need infrastructure to be there sooner. Here's some EV charging reach code options that we were.
Isn't the ban on sale of, of fossil fuel cars, it's not a ban on having them?
Correct, it's a, it's a sale, sale.
The sale of, which is.
Saved by twenty thirty-five. There are interim goals ahead of twenty thirty-five for number of chargers, number of vehicles on the road, but twenty thirty-five is the, is the end. So um, in terms of the EV charging reach codes, we prevent, presented here, single-family and non-residential options. Uh, you know, in coordination with Michael, we understand there's not a lot of multifamily, so we haven't presented that here, but that is certainly an option as well. Uh, for single-family, our reach code model requires at least two EV-ready circuits, one level two and one level one. Anything above these, if it's a Tesla charger, that totally complies with the reach code. On the non-residential side, the twenty nineteen Calgary only requires six percent of spaces be level two EV capable. Um, whereas with the plug-and-play reach code, it's uh, fifteen percent and thirty percent where, right, you know, again, this is in line with trying to uh, reach those long-term targets that we have for infrastructure.
Is it really feasible to have a level one that takes so long to charge?
It is feasible if you have, if you have two electric vehicles, um, and based on the commute patterns that we've seen. It, you may not need to, uh, two level two chargers, however, uh, that's the floor. So if you choose to go with two level twos or higher, that's absolutely a choice.
Yeah, that makes a lot more sense, but okay, all right, thank you, I just want, I, because I just didn't see that the level ones actually really, they, they are so slow.
Well, it depends upon, you know, if you do it overnight, if you have a Volt, or I mean, I've had Volts and I've had uh, you know, Priuses or even a, you know, Mercedes hybrid and on a level one, and you just plug it in overnight, you know?
Yeah, you get, you get about forty miles overnight, yeah.
Uh, you can get more than.
Right?
Yeah, you, um, I, I think I muted, no, you, you can get more than forty miles. I have a Volt, and Volt gives you the option of charging at eight kilowatts or twelve. If you charge it at twelve, which obviously uses more power, uh, I get about sixty-five miles over.
Yeah.
Like, yeah, so the twelve to twelve would be closer to level two, is it?
Okay.
Well, level two would use a lot more than twelve, and it'd obviously charge faster.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you, yeah. Okay, so some concerns, uh, and this is where we can spend, spend, spend a little bit more time. Um, so power outages are uh, a concern, the nagging concern that does not, does not seem to go away. Uh, common question that comes up is, having, is having gas more resilient? If I have gas appliances, I will be able to operate those during a power outage. That may be true in some existing buildings. In new construction homes, the appliances they get installed all use some sort of electricity, because pilot lights are not allowed anymore. So you need electricity at least for ignition. And more commonly, and actually more prevalent, more prevalent, you would use electricity to power a fan or a pump, or to power the controls of that system, an LED display, or whatever it may be. Um, so for all appliances, except for the gas stove, really, um, you are not able to operate when the power is out. However, when you're operating a gas stove, your fan won't be able to operate, so you're actually inhaling a lot of those toxic combustion pollutes that they.
But if you, yeah, okay, I, I agree, I agree with all that, but there's also, a lot of the new homes have gas fireplaces, which they use to keep warm when they had no power just a couple of weeks ago for four days.
Gas fireplaces also do work uh, in, in the rooms there, looking at this. Okay. So another question is, can the grid handle the load increase? Oh, I should mention here, there are also electric fireplaces, but yes, they are, they are more challenging to operate uh, when the power is out. Can the grid handle the load increase? Um, so we expect, so this is, what is the kind of backdrop for this question is what is causing the power issues in the first place? And that's typically been hot weather events, whether those lead to wildfire-causing conditions, or whether those lead to peak cooling loads, uh, which are kind of across the whole western region and put a major strain on our generation. So if climate change is leading us down to the path where it's uh, uh, you know, causing our, our infrastructure to uh, not be able to serve, then it behooves us to reduce our climate impact, right? So using more gas is not going to necessarily make our grid more functional. Actually, there's better utilization of the grid when we electrify. And according to the California Energy Commission, um, AV thirty thirty-two analysis, very, very aggressive electrification, meaning in both in existing buildings and all-new construction, would add about twenty percent additional peak load to our transmission distribution grid in PG and E territory. Um, it is not uh, not, not a small number, but it's also not a very large number. And we have time, as we harden the grid, in order to become more resilient to our climate impacts, we have time to also make it match prior electrification needs.
Oh, okay, so if I, if I could just interrupt this real quick, I mean, I, look, I'm, I'm in favor of doing some of these, uh, so don't, don't take my comments wrong. But a great article from the Wall Street Journal, California Races Define Power Plants, you know, even people from PG and E and from the public, you know, people that run the public utility grid, say there's not enough power, there's not enough power, we're searching for thirty-seven hundred more uh, megawatts. Uh, they're concerned if there's a, 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 a heat wave that crosses across the, the west, that there will not be enough power. The operator that, that is responsible, he called Casio, uh, says that there's, this summer, there will not be enough, enough. And then we've got uh, the issue of rolling blackouts and things like that. So right here, people from PG and E are, are saying that they don't have it. You got a quote here from a guy from PG and E, I don't even know if he works there anymore, because we saw this before, months ago, years ago. That's, he said the same thing, hey, no problem, but, but hey, yes, there is a problem. So this is a great idea, and I'm, I'm all for doing some of this, but I think that uh, there's some, there's some grid issues. And I don't know, it'd be nice if somebody would talk about it.
And maybe, maybe I can respond on this, uh, Farhad, Councilmember Whitmer, you are absolutely correct. There's a number of, of state regulators and other observers are that we do have a short-term relative, I'm going to say short-term, over the next two, three years, um, issue. And that's being driven by extreme weather. And what happens with the extreme weather is demands uh, go up, and in fact, gas-fired power plants become unstable and often go down. Um, and uh, it also relates to transmission heat and uh, contention on the transmission grid as so far. So there are a number of things happening that um, affect um, that. Um, however, the reach codes effect in terms of adding load is incredibly small. Um, so we're talking, uh, you know, we, we looked out to twenty twenty-five, and we were talking uh, point six percent added load on, onto the grid uh, as a result of new construction driven uh, under the reach codes. Um, so uh, these, these codes are, are not going to have effect on that issue. Um, there's certainly additional need for, as Farhad noted, additional grid hardening. Um, and there's a phenomenal growth happening, frankly, in the deployment of storage and other renewable resources that is far outpacing um, the expectations of the state. So um, yes, we do have a problem. Uh, um, that problem is a work in progress, and the reach codes, though, don't have any real bearing on that, on that issue.
But if I could just ask this, yeah, yeah, so I appreciate the comment. What is going to be the load when the Caltrain i- is fully electrified, since they've agreed to go with PC, with P C E? What, what, have you calculated what that load is going to be, and what's that going to do?
Yeah, I don't have those numbers in, in front of me, that's an ongoing discussion with, with Caltrain. And we wouldn't serve all of Caltrain's loads necessarily across its entire um, service territory. Uh, uh, but there is a discussion ongoing, ongoing about that. Um, at this point, we're not anticipating um, issues uh, with regards to being able to serve that load. Um, uh, but, and I can circle back around with more, more detail.
Yeah, I'd like to know what that is, because I mean, the wires are up now in many places, and they're on track. So, all right, thank you, thank you, sorry for the interruption.
No, no problem, if I may add a couple more uh, relevant thoughts. The question is, what infrastructure are we placing in now that was going to last fifty to a hundred years? Uh, compared to, you know, uh, you know, compared to the, the two or three years, maybe ten years that we have of the uh, grid supply issues, the power generation issues, the transmission issues.
Yeah.
Um, so it's, it's kind of a, a, and again, this speaks to the last point too. Electrification is not necessarily going to be uh, uh, the easy thing to do, right? When we're looking, especially when we talk about existing, I think for new construction, it actually is. But wide-scale electrification with existing buildings and with all of our electric vehicles, it's actually not easy, but it is the lowest cost, lowest risk. What else are we going to do? Uh, you know, is there direct air capture, is there green hydrogen? And studies that have looked at this, renewable gas, they've all determined that electrification is still the lower. they've all determined that electrification is still the lower cost, lowest approach because we're, you know, we're turning our ship on a dime here, we're trying to.
Yeah. I agree.
So in recognition of that, where's the twenty twenty-two statewide code going? It is making compliance easier for all electric buildings versus mixed fuel buildings. And that is true for residential, non-residential buildings. Um, and particularly for residential, there's three new features that will be enacted for any building permit that comes in uh, residential building after January first, twenty twenty-three. It's a little confusing. It's called the twenty twenty-two state code and implemented January first, twenty twenty-three. The, uh, the three requirements are heat pumps are the standard for residential HVAC systems, gas appliance, any gas appliances must be pre-wired for electrification. That means the, the wires are, are, are located in there for a larger amperage than the gas appliance we use. And gas cooking appliances require higher ventilation rates than electric counterparts.
Right.
Non-residential buildings, there's script requirement to install solar PV and battery storage, um, for most types of non-residential construction. So these are, uh, providing a lot of, uh, uh, resiliency measures at the building level um, to be able to operate and be more standalone, uh, while we're hardening our grid.
Uh, I have a question.
Yeah, I do too.
Uh, on, so I, I understand what you've got as bullet points down here are, um, are what you expect to be included in the code.
Uh, that will be. They are adopted. They are in the code.
Oh, they're already in the code and they will become effective January first, twenty twenty-three?
Correct. The code was adopted in August.
And then just to clarify, glass, gas appliances, does that apply to everywhere that methane gas is coming in or is it specific to certain types of appliances?
It is not. It is specific to certain types of appliances located inside the home, uh, space heating, water heating, cooking and clothes drying.
Okay. So does that mean it does not apply to gas fireplaces or gas cool heaters?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right. And is the, uh, is the venting, which I, I, I would hope would be, the venting that they're going to ask for a higher suck rate that it needs to be. So when you turn the, the gas stove on, the vent should come on right away because if you do that, then it's the nitric oxide is negligible. But if you don't do it, then it, you know, it, it clusters around that area. And so uh, are they, is it going to have to be connected or do you know?
That is an excellent question, uh, Councilmember. I, I do not believe that is the case. I need to revisit the adopted language. Um, I can tell you that there are, uh, there's some testing happening right now that tries to, uh, measure the efficacy of various ventilation rates around gas cooking appliances to support that type of measure going forward. And there's sensors that detect the amount of pollutants, um, around gas cooking that, that would automatically turn on the, the ventilation.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm pretty sure that's not in the code, but I, I will follow up with an email to Mike.
But we, we could put it in our code, I guess, is what we could do. Yeah. Which would, I think is a smart idea.
Can I ask you a few clarifying questions? It says here, heat pumps are standard for, uh, HVAC. Does that also mean water heaters as well? Or is that just, uh, heating and cooling of the house?
That's a, that's a great question. The way the state code works is that depending on where you live, what climate zone you're living in, one of those two appliances is a heat pump, either your space heater or your water heater. In Atherton's climate zone, it is a space heater and some other climate zones, it's the water.
And then when it says gas appliances must be pre-wired for electrification, does that mean if I put in a gas stove, I have to install the electricity to allow me for my next stove to be electric as it comes online? Okay. Next question. It says non-residential. What does prescriptive mean? Is that, that it's actually required to have, uh, solar and battery? Can you explain what prescriptive means?
Prescriptive is, imagine like a doctor's prescription, you should do this. Um, it's not a mandatory requirement. Um, so it's, uh, basically it's the energy, it's how the energy budget is built for a particular building and the state says, okay, these are our prescribed measures. Here's the budget that we, this building should use. Um, now with solar PV and battery, however, it is very hard to trade off those measures for something else that is, you know, not prescribed. You can't install less windows or a better roof um, and have the same energy impact as solar PV or battery would. So even though it is prescriptive, it is essentially mandatory. It's, it's very, very hard to try to trade them off.
Well, one last question on, on, when you're talking about, uh, chargers for cars, you have this, uh, concept of it being capable versus ready. Do you have the same thing for solar and battery so that, um, so where I'm going with that is right now, we're building houses for the future. So at minimum, whether the person wants to commit to do the technology now, we should build into the infrastructure, the ability to do that. So when we go forward with our, um, you know, with gas plugs, is there the same sort of things for battery and solar so that you have a solar-ready roof or a battery, garage-ready battery?
That's in the Calgary status now.
Already there.
It's already there. It's in Calgary. You gotta, you have to have a house, has to have be solar ready.
Solar ready was, was, uh, a provision since about twenty thirteen for residential buildings. Um, in twenty nineteen, solar PV became required, which reduces the need for any solar readiness in residential buildings. And in twenty twenty-two, the new code will have energy storage readiness provisions as well. So, Councilmember, yes?
Yeah.
And just, just to make clear, just so everybody understands, that's coming from the state. It's called Calgary. That's not coming from Atherton Council, you know, making policy on this. Uh, it's just, so we are kind of following along and it's good that the state is doing this for us because then we can, you know, make requirements that are good.
Correct. So, so this slide here is, is to illustrate, intended to illustrate the state is going electric preferred already. So if you think back to those initial options, gas ban, all electric required, electric preferred, uh, you know, the state's already going there. The, if, if we, Atherton were to choose to adopt the twenty twenty-two state, uh, reach code, uh, the only real options then become all electric required or gas bans.
Well, we could, we, we could require those that become effective in twenty twenty-three in twenty twenty-two. We could, we could pull those forward right now.
That is true.
With, you know, if they're coming, it's, you know, we might as well do it now as opposed to another time, you know, we should pull it forward.
That is true.
But I, Farad, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the essence of this is that the twenty twenty-two code will implement the electric preferred and that we could choose to either ban electricity as some few cities have done, or we could require electricity as, uh, a option that would go beyond this. It would still be a reach code.
Yeah, yeah. Let's, let's talk about the options here. This is my last slide, uh, I believe on this topic. So um, the question is, should we adopt the twenty nineteen reach code, perhaps drawing from the twenty twenty-two language? Um, or should we adopt the twenty twenty-two reach code? Um, here's, so if the twenty nineteen reach code is adopted, you know, early part of next year, you can absolutely be renewed again for the twenty twenty-two building code cycle. I believe that for your building industry, it would be beneficial if it was, if it was drafted in a way that it would be intended the same code for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-two. So there's kind of a continuation there. Um, you know, that said, the twenty twenty, we're, we're starting, on behalf of Peninsula Clean Energy, we're starting our twenty twenty-two reach code initiative in December, next month. We'll be drafting the model reach codes on top of the state codes. Um, in January through April of twenty twenty-two, we'll be hosting regional stakeholder events to gather feedback on those model codes and, you know, technical implementations. I, I will say from personal experience, stakeholder events were, um, very, very important in tweaking the code language and making improvements. So what we expect is after those stakeholder events in May, uh, we would have a twenty twenty-two reach code ready for, for local adoption. And with the end goal being that September twenty twenty-two, there's a second reading for Energy Commission approval. So I, I guess let's take it back. Yes, Atherton could adopt the twenty nineteen reach code. Uh, it would be best if it was the similar, um, for, uh, concept as that for twenty twenty-two. And, um, consider if it's going to be a building code amendment, the staff resources that would be necessary to adopt both of those reach codes, one under twenty nineteen and one under twenty-two. Of course, it could be a municipal code amendment. Um, and that would be indefinitely, uh, adopted as well. Um, but, uh, you know, that, we, we are going to be needing to re-adopt the reach code regardless by January first.
Well, well, Farad, uh, you know, we've got, uh, housing, a housing, housing element that is going to require some, some growth here and may even change single-family issues, uh, which, you know, we're currently looking in. And I think it's prudent for us to, to adopt, you know, with these different homes, how we would, you know, just require them right now to be all electric. If it's going to be a multifamily, it's got to be all electric. If it's going to be an ADU, it's got to be an all-electric. And I think, you know, we, we should put some of these things in now as opposed to wait, you know? Um, I just think it's prudent to go ahead and start. We, we, we build twenty-five new homes or remodel or whatever, knock down and rebuild twenty-five on average new homes. And we've got hundreds of ADUs that are going to need to be built or multifamily homes that are going to need to be built to meet our arena numbers. So um, I think the sooner the better that we can move forward on, on some of these things in some manner. Uh, you know, maybe with some exceptions for certain things here and there. Uh, I think is, it was prudent for Atherton to really consider and move forward.
So, uh, that, that makes a lot of sense to me. I'll just, uh, uh, wrap up the, the slide so we can get to discussion. Uh, Peninsula Clean Energy will be here every step of the way to support staff, no matter the decisions that are made um, regarding how, what, what kind of reach goes to get adopted. Um, I think another key aspect that I'd like to point out is this, this allelectricdesign.org, there is services provided for the building industry. Uh, we have a team of, uh, a wide range of technical experts on all sorts of buildings to provide guidance on how to effectively build all-electric because it is new for, for many. Here's our contact.
Thank you. Thank you, Rafael. I just want to just circle back. I understand real quickly, just one, one more clarification that we would be, um, accelerating what the state is going to be kind of mandating by twenty twenty-four.
Uh, my, we don't know what the state's going to do in twenty twenty-five, um, for, for January first, uh, for their twenty twenty-five code.
Twenty twenty-five.
My expectation is that for, at the single-family level, uh, and perhaps all residential below three stories, it will be substantially, uh, electric preferred or perhaps all-electric. That's my expectation.
All right.
Um, on the non-residential side, for the easier building types, I expect about the same, but for more complex, that they're going to leave, but you know, that's the direction that the state code has headed from twenty nineteen.
Okay. Great. Does anybody have any questions for Farad at this time? Otherwise, I'd like to give our, um, EPC member her five minutes to give her, her presentation. And then we can wrap it up after that. Does that make sense? Stacy, are you ready?
I'm ready. Let me, uh, share my screen really quick.
And I've got word from Councilmember DeGoya, he's going to stay the course here, uh, and be late to his next appointment. Uh, because this is a very important, uh, thing for us to be doing right now. Okay. Thank you.
Great. So can you guys all see my deck?
Yep.
Okay. So I went through and I changed it. So it won't be five minutes. It'll be probably closer to three. So it's after five o'clock. Um, but yeah, I'm Stacy Miles-Holland. I'm speaking on behalf of the Environmental Programs Committee to urge you to adopt a gas ban reach code. Um, this summer's UN climate report was clear. We have ten years to cut global warming pollution in half in order to be on the pathway to avoiding climate disaster. Ten years is the deadline. It is not the time to get started. Atherton's Climate Action Plan commits to reducing emissions to forty-nine percent below two thousand five levels by twenty thirty. Given that forty percent of Atherton's emissions come from residential buildings, there is no path to hitting that goal without reducing the number of gas appliances in the town. Although it might not seem that way, the, the easiest first step is to avoid adding new gas infrastructure to the town to begin with. As a reminder, this is a reach code for new builds and renovations. This would not be an undue burden for residents. On the contrary, allowing residents to invest resources to build gas infrastructure to their homes would be irresponsible. The future is clear. Home electrification is inevitable. California has set the goal of total economy-wide decarbonization by twenty forty-five. State law has set the target of reducing building emissions by forty percent by twenty thirty. Nationally, the Biden administration has made commitments to cutting methane by thirty percent by twenty thirty. Methane is the key component of natural gas and it delivers eighty times more warming impact than carbon dioxide. We should be preparing Atherton residents for a gas-free future. It would be easier and less expensive for residents to electrify their new construction than to retrofit their homes later. And beyond its impact on climate change, which frankly should be enough, there are a number of other benefits for banning natural gas in Atherton. Here are four. One, natural gas inside the home is unhealthy. Burning gas emits pollutants that can cause or worsen respiratory illnesses. Children living in homes with gas appliances are forty-two percent more likely to have asthma. Eliminating natural gas also significantly reduces the risk of carbon monoxide poisoning and fires during earthquakes. Two, green futures add home value. Studies have shown that green homes sell faster and for more money than homes without. Three, home electrification will save residents money. Gas appliances are more expensive to purchase and install. The cost of natural gas is increasing. Meanwhile, the efficiency of electric appliances means that utility bills are often lower and the upfront costs can be offset by a growing number of rebates. Four, we are not asking residents to buy worse appliances. These are cutting-edge appliances using proven technologies. Once this reach code is adopted, the public will need to be educated on the benefits of home electrification to ease the transition. The EPC stands ready to help. I outlined some initial ideas in the written memo, which include direct community outreach, collaboration with the building department and the celebration of our gas-free residents at Earth Day or other new special events. Climate change is real and it's caused by fossil fuels, including natural gas. Atherton is already feeling the effects. Drought, wildfires, record-breaking heat waves are commonplace. Climate change is an existential threat to our quality of life and it's being treated as such by our neighbors. Strict reach codes have been adopted by all of our neighboring cities. Atherton is falling behind. It's time for bold leadership from the city council. The Environmental Programs Committee urges you to adopt the gas ban reach code. It's the right thing to do for Atherton, for the city, for our children and the planet. Thanks.
Thank you, Stacy, very much. Uh, any member of the, um, council have a question for Stacy at this time?
Nope.
No? Okay. Uh, any member of the public have a comment or a question for Stacy at this time and for Farad? We'll take them both at the same time.
There are several hands up, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I, uh, okay. Um, let's see if I can find them. Uh, so I'll just go, let's see, I've got, um, Robert Gould.
Is it okay if I go ahead and speak? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Robert. Yes. Uh-huh.
Thanks. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Um, Dr. Robert Gould, after working as a pathologist at, uh, San Jose Kaiser for over thirty years, since twenty twelve, I've been a Associate Adjunct Professor at UCSF School of Medicine, working on our program on reproductive health and the environment. Since nineteen eighty-nine, I've also been president of San Francisco Bay Physicians for Social Responsibility, for whom I'm speaking today, representing hundreds of health professionals throughout our region who speak for the health of our patients and communities who are increasingly impacted by the unfolding public and environmental health impacts of global warming and the clearly connected issues of air pollution. The recently released assessment by the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change is unequivocal in its call for urgent action to ensure an energy-efficient and fossil-free future. Reducing reliance on gas appliances is health-protective, not only in their climate benefits of moving away from fossil fuel extraction and use, but also because gas stoves and other appliances can be a large source of toxic pollution in homes, reaching levels of pollution that would be illegal in outdoor settings. Children, especially those of color, are particularly at risk of respiratory illnesses such as asthma associated with gas, appliance pollution, and lower-income households may be at a higher risk of exposure. So as one example, a twenty thirteen meta-analysis looking at the association between gas stoves and childhood asthma found children in homes with gas stoves have a forty-two, forty-two percent increased risk of experiencing asthma symptoms, current asthma, a twenty-four percent increased risk of ever being diagnosed with asthma by a doctor or lifetime asthma, and an overall thirty-two percent increased risk of both current and lifetime asthma. In addition, there's mounting evidence linking combustion, their pollution with adverse brain development, the two thousand. The two thousand nine study found evidence that infant through preschool age, early life exposure to indoor air pollution from gas appliances may be related to impaired cognitive function and may increase the risk of developing attention deficit hyperactivity disorder symptoms. So we strongly support Atherton adopting an all-electric reach code now requiring electric heating and appliances, onsite solar energy and electric vehicle charging infrastructure, and all-new residential and commercial construction. As such, you would join many other cities in California who've already adopted electric requirements for new construction that avoid new fossil gas use and recognition of numerous benefits to community health, safety, and stable climate of future afforded by this transformation. And you'd be very much in line with the really excellent work that Douglas Kim reported on before in terms of your ongoing work in this area. So in closing, we call on you to use this critical opportunity to demonstrate Atherton's leadership and commitment to rapidly develop the more economical, pollution-free buildings we need now for the optimal public environmental and climate health we and future generations so deserve. So thank you for considering this reach code. We think it's really important.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Gould, for your, uh, comments. I'm going to call on Terry Nagel next, and um, our city clerk is going to be timing. We have a three-minute, uh, speaking timeframe. Um, and there's a number of you, so maybe we, um, can make it as quickly as possible. Terry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I'll be brief because I know a lot of other people want to talk, and I did send an email today. I just want to emphasize a few brief points. One is that uh, having a reach code is one of the fastest ways to address climate change. I think you know that this is already on the horizon for the state, and so the sooner you do it, the better for all. Um, and also, heat pump technology has been around for many years in some parts of the country like Florida and Hawaii, where they have a high-water table. It's been around since, you know, the fifties. And so it's not new technology. Everyone that has a refrigerator already has a heat pump that in reverse acts as a refrigerator. And so if you're thinking about installing an air conditioner, you would be wise to replace your whole space heater with heat pump technology. And one thing I forgot to mention in my email is that, um, it's important not to have lots of exemptions in whatever reach code you decide to adopt, because the more you have, the more arguments your planning staff is going to have with applicants. So, um, it's easier on the staff, it saves them time, and it's easier on the public if you have a more general reach code. And I hope that Atherton will join the many cities who are, um, enjoying the benefits of reach codes already. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry. Um, I'll call on Crystal Wickham. Crystal, you can make your comments now. Thank you. Hi, Crystal.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and council members. Uh, my name's Crystal Wickham. I live in Sunnyvale, which did pass a strong all-electric reach code about a year ago. Um, I'm happy to hear that Atherton is considering reach codes or a gas ban to prevent future buildings from contributing to greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, we all experienced again this year the wildfire smoke and saw devastating fires, letting us know that climate change is here now. Uh, besides the home hardening and adapting to the changes in the climate, as in the discussion earlier today, the town should further act decisively and dramatically to transition away from the fossil fuels whose byproducts warm the earth's climate. When it is time, I encourage the Climate Action, um, Plan Update to include a net zero target as soon as possible, but not later than twenty forty-five, in line with the state's goal. As we saw from Mr. Kim's Climate Action Plan Report, the vast majority of Atherton's greenhouse gas emissions come from two places, burning methane gas in our buildings and burning gasoline in our transportation. As you give guidance to staff on a reach code ordinance, please consider taking action sooner rather than later, and consider three aspects to make the codes as strong as possible. First, propose either a gas ban or re, reach code for all-electric new construction for all building types with minimal exceptions. Uh, second, specify that hundred percent of parking spaces for new multifamily dwellings should be at least EV charging capable at level one or above. And third, consider a higher percentage than ten percent of spaces for non-residential parking. Several cities have required seventy percent of spaces or more as at least EV-capable, since charging during the day at businesses and workplaces can utilize abundant solar energy on the grid. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Crystal. Uh, Bruce Nagel had, uh, spoken earlier. Are you still with us, Bruce? Would you like to make your comments now? Hmm, I think he, there you are, Bruce. You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Now I can hear you, yes, uh huh.
Okay, so, uh, you had a lot of excellent technical discussions. I do want to raise one issue that I think is underlying all of this that we do need to remain aware of, and that is, is that we don't just inherit the earth for today, but we're passing it on to our children and grandchildren. And they're the ones, yes, we see effects today, but if we hand them a earth that isn't what it should be, they're going to suffer for it, and they're going to wonder what we, what we were doing at the time when we knew that, that the situation was important and, and serious to do it now. So as you consider what you're going to do and try to make it as bold as possible, and remember that you're not doing it just for yourself, you're doing it for your children and the grandchildren. By the way, that's probably the most important thing that, that, um, you know, you all are facing is the raising of the next generation. Thank you for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you very much, Bruce. Stephanie Morris, are you, uh, still online? Would you like to make your comments? Thank you.
Yes, I am. Thank you. So I'm Stephanie Morris, and I'm representing Mothers Out Front, Silicon Valley. We are a group that mobilizes for a livable climate for all children. And we have about two thousand local supporters, and on behalf of myself and our supporters, we wanted to urge Atherton to adopt the all-electric reach code for all new building types. Since buildings contribute up to forty percent of greenhouse gas emissions in Silicon Valley, all-electric buildings are critical to protect us from the worst impacts of the climate crisis, as your speakers have noted tonight. Um, they're safer, they're less expensive to build and operate, and they're better for public health. And I'm a volunteer. I just wanted to make that very clear. I took the afternoon off work today. I just think that, that, uh, children, they're not yet old enough to have a public voice at these types of meetings. And the decisions that are made here will affect them tremendously. Also affected are people who don't live in Silicon Valley at all, who are affected by the pollution that results from the extraction of fossil gas. So I think as elected officials, we're kind of all on the same page because we all care about the future. And through your public service, you actually have the ability to make a positive impact on the climate crisis. Um, a couple of quick things I wanted to add, if I could just very quickly. Um, the reach codes are at their most effective when we can eliminate all the new gas line infrastructure. So if we kind of do a half-reach code, we don't really derive the whole benefit of the safety as well as all the climate, um, impacts. And a few people already touched on the harmful impacts of indoor stoves. And, um, Mothers Out Front co-sponsored a study that presented many of the results that were presented here tonight. I wanted to say from personal experience, little by little, I've been electrifying my home. It took several years. It was extremely expensive, and I have to say, I love my induction stove. It's absolutely fantastic. And I now have heat pump water heaters and a heat, a water heater and a heat pump, uh, energy, which heat pump cooling and heating system. They're all fantastic. I think that many people who don't, um, want to give up their gas appliances, just haven't yet tried the electric appliances. They're really, really amazing. And one other thing we'd like to request is that there are no automatic exemptions in the code. Several other cities, including San Jose, have allowed automatic exemptions. And this has allowed some companies to come in saying that they're going to provide fuel cells. They're going to use bloom boxes, for example, which are marketed as green technology. However, those technologies often use power derived from fracked gas. And because we have our Peninsula Clean Energy, those sources are actually much more dirty than the electric, electric energy, excuse me. So I think that the code would be very well-served to not allow automatic exemptions, but to require that any homeowner or commercial operation requesting an exemption do so and justify why they need to have an exemption. So thank you very much for listening, and I hope you will think of the children and future.
Thank you, Stephanie. Is, uh, Natalia Esperanza, uh, still online? Natalia?
Yeah, yes.
There you are.
Yes, uh, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Natalia Esperza. I'm sixteen years old, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Silicon Valley Youth Climate Action. Please consider an all-electric new construction reach code for all building types with minimal blanket exceptions. Exceptions requests could instead be reviewed on a case-by, case-by-case basis. Please consider specifying one hundred percent of the spaces to be EV charging at level one or above for new multifamily dwellings. Please also consider a higher percentage than ten percent of the spaces for non-residential parking. Several cities have required seventy percent of the spaces or more at least EV-capable since charging during the day at businesses and workplaces can utilize abundant solar power on the grid. We urge, the youth urges you to take these steps because climate change will, will directly affect us on our day-to-day life. Thank you.
Mayor Lewis?
Looks like the mayor may be frozen.
Okay.
Sheil was the next, uh, in line for public comment, I believe.
Dashville Leeds, please, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Dashville Leeds. I'm the Conservation Assistant for the Sierra Club Lumber Piazza Chapter. Um, thanks, Councilmember DeGoya, for sticking around, and I really appreciate Stacy Mau's, uh, recommendations to pass the gas ban version. Um, we really do believe that, um, it's important to pass the municipal ordinance pathway of the electric requirements. Um, this sort of gets you out of that three-year code cycle update. You can lock your requirements in in perpetuity, and it will save you a lot of time having to revisit these. So I think it's really important to do that. Um, we'll be going around to a lot of the cities that did all-electric reach codes and getting them to transition to gas bans in this next code cycle. So I think it's just to get, you know, a step up on that. Um, I second the comments, uh, made by Terry Nagel to minimize exemptions and also agree with, uh, Stephanie and Natalia's comments. Uh, for the exemptions that you do have, hopefully none, but if you do, don't put them in as blanket exemptions. Um, make people apply for them and demonstrate either cost infeasibility or technical infeasibility in order to get an exemption. And this is because the writing on the wall is really clear that our society is phasing out gas, which means the eventual end of the natural gas distribution system. So any gas use that we allow effectively extends that network, and it's going to make it much more difficult and expensive for us to dismantle that. So really, every new gas appliance or new pipeline that we build, it becomes a liability to us, not only in terms of cost, but also in terms of climate impacts. And it's ultimately a tragedy. Um, I think at this point, um, you know, so many cities have looked at this, that the new construction is considered by many to be low-hanging fruit. So I really hope you take the examples of the um, fully all-electric requirements that have preceded you and adopt a very strong municipal gas ban with minimal exceptions. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Uh, I believe next we have Tom Cabot.
Uh, hello, um, I'm Tom Cabot, an energy engineer living, uh, next door in Menlo Park. Uh, thank you so much for considering this. I think, uh, you've had a lot of great presentations and speakers tonight, uh, really pointing out that the thing that we're all coming, becoming so familiar with, that we have to, as a society, pivot away from the fossil fuels. And, and so we owe it to the people doing the building, that we give them the proper guidance to help them, you know, break the inertia that they've been in and help develop the market for new all-electric construction. And I, I'm so glad to welcome Atherton in its consideration of a strong reach code, reach code at this point, and a very bold move, if you can, because what I've seen from, uh, where my city started as the first city to develop an, an electric-only reach code is that other cities have built upon the first few measures we did, and they've added more and more. And the cities are getting bolder and the direction is better. And so Atherton has a chance now to, uh, take that mantle and carry it a little further down the field for us. So thanks so much for doing this, and, um, I, I wish you the most courage you can, you can muster to make the best future for us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cabot. I know we have, uh, Diane Bailey and then James Tullia after that, and that's all the hands I see.
Great. Thank you, Anthony.
Ms. Bailey of the floor.
Hey. Good evening.
Hi, Diane.
There we go. All right. Good evening. Thanks so much for the opportunity to comment. My name's Diane Bailey. I'm commenting on behalf of the Campaign for Fossil-Free Buildings in Silicon Valley and our thirty-seven member groups working together to accelerate a phase-out of fossil fuels from our homes and buildings. Our coalition strongly supports a reach code or a gas prohibition for all-electric construction as well as EV charging, and we sent a detailed comment letter in support of that. So I'll keep my comments brief. We urge you to move forward with this policy in Atherton as quickly as possible for the many good reasons that you've already heard from others today. I'd like to support the recommendation from Stacy Miles for a permanent prohibition on new gas infrastructure. And I also want to echo the recommendations that many others have made, Natalia, Crystal, Stephanie Dash, and others about minimizing exemptions and adopting a strong gas phase-out as possible, as well as, uh, ensuring that any new multifamily construction, uh, should offer access to EV charging for everyone. That's really important for equity reasons. Um, you know, so many other cities have taken action. This has really become the mainstream choice to respond to the climate emergency. Uh, fifty-one cities and counties in California have now taken action to avoid or prohibit gas use, methane gas, in new construction. So I hope Atherton will move quickly. Um, I'll skip the many reasons why you should move forward with this, because I think you've heard from many of my colleagues and just say, we can't put off action any longer to cut methane and carbon pollution and transition off of fossil fuels. Let's recognize that we're in a climate emergency and act accordingly. I hope you'll support this measure moving forward without any further delay. Let's all do our part towards a climate-safe future. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last hand that I see is, uh, Mr. Tullia.
Hi, uh, James Tullia, resident of Sunnyvale, and I'm wearing two hats in these comments. Um, the first is I'm the chairperson of Carbon Free Silicon Valley, which, um, is a climate advocacy group of, of, uh, city climate leaders across San Mateo and Santa Clara Counties, and wanted to express, um, my, uh, strong support for the Environmental Programs Committee recommendation for a gas ban. Um, and, um, no or very few exceptions, um, it's not needed. Um, and then with my hat on as um, a senior energy coach who have been worked, I've been working directly with, um, uh, thirty of our hundred clients in the Home Intel program in Atherton. Um, I, I see, I've seen nothing that, uh, supports anything different than that. Um, there's a lot of gas use in, um, in these homes that, uh, you know, from having visited or spoken with homeowners, um, there's, there's no reason why new construction and major remodels can't be switched. Um, and I'll give you one specific example of the roughly hundred clients we have. Three of, of these homes are all-electric. Um, two of them were already electric before we, um, we, they started working with us. But there's one really good example I wanted to mention, um, that joined the Home Intel program, uh, four years ago, and over that time has electrified their home. And this isn't new construction, but, uh, existing home electrification is even harder than new. So the easy stuff is what you're doing now with a new construction. But, um, so this, um, homeowner electrified their home. Um, they saved about two thousand dollars a year from a combination of energy efficiency and electrification. They saved another seventeen hundred dollars on, off their bill um, by going solar near the beginning of this year or the end of last year, um, for a total of about fifty-two percent savings. So they did add about fifteen percent electricity usage when they went to zero gas, um, but they, um, uh, they then saved thirty-five percent off of that, so a total of twenty-five percent drop in overall electricity usage. So by adding a few solar panels, they've actually reduced the, the grid impacts. And, um, getting back to a, um, question earlier, this is a five thousand square foot home, so fairly typical for Atherton. Um, eh, um, nineteen ninety-nine, um, year. Um, so I think it's a really good example of showing how electrification can reduce someone's bill um, significantly, uh, come, combined, um, with switching to these high-efficiency electric devices instead of gas as well as electrification, and then adding some additional benefits and savings from, uh, solar. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Uh, Mayor, the mayor is, uh, having connection difficulties. The mayor is having connection difficulties, Anthony. So she's trying to log back in now. So the, the next on the council should take over while we're waiting for her to return.
That would be.
That's me. That's me. So I don't think there's any other council comments unless we have some. If council comments, we're going to be addressing this item in the future as to what decisions we're going to make and what trade-offs we're going to have. As well as, you know, make sure the council provides their input to George with regards to the leaf blower ban presentation. Other than that, unless there's a council member that has their hand up, which I can't see, that wants to make a comment or a report, we'll adjourn the meeting.
I have a comment.
Okay, yes.
First, I want to say thank you to everybody here that, that took the time out of their life to be on our meeting. And my only regret is that the citizens of Atherton, that we only have 31 people on here and that everyone else is not seeing it. I think that it's really important we engage our community in education on this topic. And I'd love, I wish everyone in Atherton heard what all of you just had to say tonight. I, I think we should clearly, this is not the venue for us to sit and make some decisions tonight. I think the stuff that we've heard is very important and we need to dedicate more serious time to make an action plan going forward.
Is that it? Thank you. Are there any other council members who would like to make a comment?
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
So, George, maybe you could give us a little bit of direction. It, it, it seems, I, I understand we're kind of at a cusp because we're moving from what had been the 2019 code to the 22 code. And while the Peninsula Clean Energy presentation was focused on the 2019 code, they're clearly moving into looking at reach codes for the 22 code. And the 22 code is quite a bit different than the 2019 code. Maybe what, the, the, the right way to proceed is for us to target this, the all-elect, to me, there, there's two options. We either choose a methane gas ban, in which case that would be an ordinance and we could, we, we could probably structure that and have it be some exceptions to an all-out ban. Which, by the way, is what we did in the course of building our new town center. There's no natural gas line connected to the new town center. And I, I, I think that's a really important thing to emphasize to our residents, that the town is eating its own dog food. I'd like to understand the difference between an all-out gas ban with some exceptions versus the all-electric reach code. And maybe the place to start is to have staff work with PCE to come back to us with what that all-electric reach code would be and how that would differ from a gas ban with some exceptions.
Exactly. That's, that's a good, good summary right there. I don't think I could add too much to it. I had Anthony put up that timeline that Farhad had on the screen with Peninsula Clean Energy. And staff can certainly work with Peninsula Clean Energy on that 2022 timeline for an all-electric code. And if there are exceptions that the town wants to consider as we go along, we can certainly discuss them. And there would all be public meetings and opportunity for public input along the way.
But, but George, and, and Rick, I think that we should probably do something a little bit earlier with the growth that we're being asked to, to project. And so, you know, I, I, while I like the, this calendar here, I think we can act faster.
Yeah, I don't think we need to wait. I, I'm suggesting that staff work on this and come back in November. I mean, in December or January, whenever.
No, 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 January.
Enough time.
Okay, that's fine. I'm not looking at the calendar, but whatever works.
Right.
I'm sure that.
January to April, they would, you know, do that. So I agree with all of that. And I think that, you know, we've really come a long way this evening with everybody's input. And I think George wants to say something one more time, George.
Well, I just don't want to give a false impression here. We're bringing something, we could bring something to the council to talk about. But to Councilmember Whitmer's urgency sense, you're not going to get anything adopted before the end of the year if we go through that particular process. So, and it would, it may not be congruent with what's going to happen in 2022 anyway. That's why we're suggesting that we just follow PCE's and Farhad's chart here because that's when it would come up by natural course. I just don't think you're going to get something adopted over the summer. We have a lot of concerns about doing that. And then you're going to want to have a lot of public engagement and input along that way. It's, it's just not going to be quick. We can try, but I'm, I don't want to give a false impression that January, February, you're going to be adopting something. That's.
No, no, but no, that wasn't the, the, the impression, but we would, we would give you guidelines and then we could start drafting an ordinance. Obviously, the ordinance has to have two readings. That takes two months. And then, then it has to have a period of time thereafter before it takes effect. So, you know, my, my, my comment was with ADUs being built and people planning, maybe with the SB nine and SB 10, there might be some multifamily homes that are going to come up. There may be some expansion at the schools and the colleges. Whatever we can do to implement stuff now would be worthwhile as opposed to waiting. That's all that was my comment.
Yeah, I totally understand. We can certainly move down that path. I just, I don't want to mix up what's going to happen in 2022 with what we sort of adopt midway and then we're doing it all over again in 2022 and builders get confused.
Well, it's going to be similar to what they've done, the state has done with the, with the leaf blower ban. There's going to have a lot of Lucy Goosey stuff in it.
Well, I, I, I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Whitmer, and I do agree that, you know, with all the other potential increase in development opportunities that are, could be happening within the next couple of years. We do want to have some, something in place to help mitigate doing business as usual and historic. But I do believe that we need to have some stakeholder events to explain, to educate, to reach out and not just do this in a vacuum. And then, and then get blowback. Not happening that. Okay. And I know the wheels of motion do churn slowly sometimes. I think we're taking some really big steps here.
Okay.
So if I could get consensus from calendar, from, from, from council before I get bumped off of my internet again, I don't know what's happening, to do what are the, to have the staff work with PCE to create and Joe, George is, he's not having a fit. He's trying to keep his power on in his office. Talk about being energy conservation. If he sits still too long, everything turns off. So Diana, please.
I just want to say, I'm, I'm thrilled with what we're saying about going forward with these recommendations, but I think that we should also dive a little deeper because what we didn't talk about, there's, for example, the EV requirements. We have so many cars and our average home has more, is got to be at least a two or three-car garage. So I think we could actually be more aggressive on some of the requirements for electrical charging. And I also, so there's some of the things that are unique to our community that we could tailor. I'm all in favor of going forward with that timeline that was on there and going with that, but I think we need to have some subsequent meetings. We, Bill recommended, brought up the issue of ADUs. There's a difference between ADUs and house things. And for Atherton, I have to say on the other side, although I'm totally in favor of this, there are a few things we do need to consider, which are things like, are there available pool pumps that are, if, if we do a ban, we need to go the next tier of analysis based on our city. So I'm not saying not to. I'm just saying that we need to, we owe it to our citizens to do the next tier drill down.
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely right. And so I think what Bill was saying is that kind of you flew in, flowed into that. And, and the EV charging stations, I think what we have on the books now is, you know, completely inadequate for what we should be mandating because of the amount of EVs that we have. And that's, that's really low-hanging fruit. And we could just do a separate ordinance just on that to kind of kickstart the, the process. What do you think, Bill?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to, I think at one time somebody said maybe in January or study session or February, we would talk about things that we specifically want to get going. And, and I think, yeah, and so I, I would like to do that, January or February. And that would be a public meeting.
We got some thumbs up from George there, okay?
All right, thank you.
All right. So with that, did, I think we may have lost, oh, no, there's Councilmember DeGolia. Do, do, Rick, do you have any parting?
Oh, I'm good.
Okay, you're good.
January, February sounds like the right target.
Okay. So is that, does that bring an end to our meeting at this point? Thank you.
Listen to adjourn.
Yes. Thank you all. Thank you, all of you tireless, public, you know, private advocates for making our world a safer place. I really, really appreciate all your hard work.